...at 7:00 PM, we're in the MLDA Elementary School. And I'll start with a little call.
Mark King.
How's your morning?
Susan Hall.
Rich Canong. We have on the agenda, first item is approval of the agenda. Public comment, approval of the minutes for November 21st. Pending applications, we have two pending applications. Oak Ridge Terrace, a major final subdivision application. And American Iron and Metal, a major conditional use application. We have new applications from Rundle Grange LLC, a zoning amendment. And then we're going to work on changes to the bylaws and the procedures that we have established. And we need to set public hearing dates, but we'll do that as we go through the items. And any other business? The motion to approve the agenda?
The motion we approve the agenda.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Any changes before? With the ends is here. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. And now that the end is here, we can make it even more unanimous, the next amendment.
Okay, off of that.
Okay. No, this is the... I got to do one and the old one. Okay. Time for public comment.
Yes.
That period of time in which the public is invited to speak on items that are not listed on the agenda and are not in front of the claiming board. And at this point, I'm going to exceed from Marty.
I'd like to apologize at the last meeting for the lack of the quorum that I may have had. It was, I wasn't planning coming to the meeting, and I had feared that we may not have had a quorum. It was actually between cold medicine and a night book. And I apologize.
Thank you, Marty. Anybody else have any comments that they would like to make? Hearing none, we will move on. Approval of the minutes for November 21st.
I was in a time of... I'm just going to make one connection. I was in a time of...
You were.
You were.
Yeah.
Okay, so had.
You were just really quiet then, like...
Probably not. I probably have your emotions and stuff.
First of all, from there, it's cool, it's my name.
Right, I know.
I would make one suggestion. It's over on page four. In, under, from a numeral VI, numeral six. Item two is a reference to town council. That's not a misspelling, but we probably want council, S-E-L.
Yep.
So it's clear that it's the county and not some municipal body.
Okay.
Need a motion to approve as a many.
Seconded.
The end is approved, it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. We will now move on to pending application.
I understand.
Yep.
And as... Oak Ridge Terrace, a major final subdivision application proposal to develop a 14 lot subdivision on a 66.9 acre parcel identified as TACMAP 17 lot 15A at the intersection of South School and Limerick Road in the R2 and Shoreland Zone. Walter Woods is the property owner, and Jason is the applicant of record. It's easy way to do it. Okay, thank you for the new set of plans that has addressed a couple of the items that are on here, but not everything that needed to be addressed. It still says duck pond.
So we were just looking at that, so I have made, I changed it on all my plans, yeah, but when I got the new plans in, I did, you know, I'm always focused on the, do the lots look right and everything, and kept skimming over it, so. Easy fix, even though it keeps...
And we got the letter from the fire chief on the cistern. I noticed that the house has been moved back, or moved to a different location on lot one.
Yes, yep.
Can you see it?
Can you just...
Yeah, it's over here.
Is there really, I'm sorry, do you...
Yep, no, you can...
I'd like to see it.
The, 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 there's actually another set of plans that I have. You don't see the law until it's underneath the tax, but it's 50 points setback.
Okay.
And if you look at, a couple of issues are changing. He has placed a bag.
All right, and then so it's just fixed.
What I'm looking for, I don't see it on the...
The last, it's in red, it might not be in the, the last two items in the covenants.
From that page?
It will be, it's near the...
This is what, this is what?
This is what, right over here. Yeah, this is this one simple drive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just moved up here.
Yeah, the cistern, she can have that, she can put it somewhere up here in the head of the...
I noticed the end of it, and there's the other changes.
What is the issue?
The issue was in lieu of street trees, which is required, we put that street tree down. We looked at that, they had proposed to do no tree cutting, actually presumably some of these things.
If you see item 330, it references the approval set, which it is, there are, it's set out with notes there, because we don't know where the driveway entrance is going to go. That they have to, they get a 30 foot clearing window on each lot, and then the rest has to be maintained as wooded between the setback and the property line.
Can you, why don't you give us the presentation of this? Because all of this, I'm going to just write down, it's a whole chaos.
It's actually on sheet C200. So when stating a tree preservation note, top. I'm sorry, C101.2. This is the only sheet where you have the narration.
C101...
101.2. 101.2. And if you look at landscape and tree preservation note, at the top.
Yeah. Lot clearing shall preserve existing tree stands to maximum practical extent. Yep, and then you'll see the 25 foot windows and all the proposals at the driveway locations.
And it references to the note. So basically, they can only clear 25 feet on the floor.
But how do they got to clear a number of houses?
Well, they're not allowed to clear. My understanding is this is in lieu of street treaty, so we're preserving the 25 foot buffer from the property, because you don't want tree trees in the right of way. 25 foot buffer from the property line to the front setback. No, because it's, it looks like, the note needs to reference to the front setback to the property line.
Why is the two being... Is allowed?
I knew somebody would still be upset. He left the note.
Well, 25 feet to the front setback is 25 feet from the lot line. Which is what, we had to do that, because we're trying to move all the, we're trying to move away from the natural resources, so.
I'd have to do that too. So what is the clause, what is the clause and where does it go? You're suggesting it's to go into the note.
It says lot clearing.
Yeah, the no cut buffer is...
Grab it that way.
But that's not part of the... Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, we can, we can put that on... I mean, I could reverse the, I could reverse the hatchets, and say... You know, it's because I don't want someone to look at this plan and say they put their driveway in a different location, and then it would be in violation of approved plans that we're trying to do it descriptively, so that if they put their driveway, they can have no more than 25 feet as it runs along the right of way, cleared for driveway access, and then the rest needs to remain wooded.
So my question is, with respect to the note on the plan, you're advising us that, yeah, there's a clause that's missing.
Yeah, it should be, it should reference, it should reference between the property line and the 25 foot setback, which defines where the tree preservation stand must be along the road from it.
Must we put that clause at the very end of the existing note?
Yes, I would have ended up right to say that.
To tell you honestly, I was sort of confident it was delineated somewhere on the plan.
Well...
And the reason, and I know, it's getting, it's getting messy. So I'm just thinking about all the contractors I work with, you know, if it's not delineated, just basically putting it, just...
Descript okay as a condition of approval, that we pre-flag every lot before it's cleared?
I love that.
How's that?
I don't, I don't agree with that at all.
No?
I'm not interested.
Okay, no worries.
If I have a customer that wants a driveway to the right side or the left, I want to be able to, I want to be able to accommodate that customer. If you can't, to me looking to build a home, and they didn't want the driveway to that one side, you know, I'm hiring a surveyor to specifically lay an area within each lot, because I want to keep as many trees as possible between the properties for the purpose of preservation, but also, it's more marketable, it's more saleable. And there's a privacy buffer between it, and that's, and that's how we play that. If we portray where you want those right now...
No, 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 Walt, but that's not what I was suggesting. I was, my suggestion to the board, if they were comfortable and amenable to this, would be, as each lot is prepared for development, we flag the limits of what should be cleared consistent with the plan, that's all. Which, which is kind of what you were talking about.
I'm doing that anyways.
I know. That's why, that's why these guys might feel some level of comfort, if it could be a condition of approval noted into the findings effect, that's all. The driveway location specifically, I think is, that should be variable, depending on if you have a garage that wants to be on the left side or the right side of the house, which very much has to do with the orientation, because you don't want to put a garage on the south side of your house.
What I'm also trying to do with my customers is because, we, if, if there's a house to the right, we want to try to put the garages together, so we have privacy to the left and right of the homes for their yard space, to separate those, the entertaining areas, if you want to call them. So, so that there is some separation between these, between these homes for more privacy. So, again, as, as I stated, I'm going to specifically clear, just, I typically care about a 40 foot perimeter around the existing footing or foundation, and then we blend into the natural surroundings from there. But if I have a customer that wants to put the house a little further back, by putting that on the plan, by being approved today, they don't have to come back to the board to get that changed, which is a process. So that's what I'm trying to avoid doing, but I have no problem with, you know, going to the coordinator force and saying, this is what we're going to do, and, and flag that error out as, as part of the permit process, so we know where that is at the end of the day, if that's acceptable to the board. Because I only clear roughly a 25 foot strip for the, for the driveway, we do a driveway roughly 14 feet wide. Then I clear for the leach field area, just what's necessary. And then I clear roughly a 30 to 40 foot buffer around the house, and then blend the house into the natural surroundings from that point. That's typical of what I do with every development, you know, homes that I've ever built. I don't like clear cutting anything, because it's, it's really less marketable.
Do you have a chance?
I don't think that's on the... I think if you have it in the literature, in the condition...
Yeah, I think if we get the note right.
And you can remind that whoever the contractors are, that they should read whatever the conditions are, very careful. Are you the contractor on all the properties?
I'll be building too.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that satisfies me. I think it makes sense. I think we're on the same page.
Okay. Yeah, I, going through all that, basically what we're saying is that the exist vegetation, the existing front, existing vegetation on the front yard setback of each lot shall be retained except for driveway openings. So a maximum of 25 feet.
And I'm up here with that.
Which is what I was trying to say.
It's already street full.
And we'll, we'll get that note put on the plan.
No problem.
And that could go as a condition for, on the recording.
Yeah, it would also be on 330. I would, I would, 930 to say that.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So you don't keep going back to the point, you say, this is the requirement.
I thought perhaps you had different builders coming in to build different houses, and that it would be a concern, but if you're building all the homes...
Well, I'm like, I don't know if I'm building all the homes, but I'm going to build the majority of these homes.
Well...
And also, I, I've also kept architectural control to make sure that they do, do the needs of, you know, if I build a home for my customer, I want to make sure they abide by the standards. So I have to review those plans. It's in my covenant that even if I'm a builder or homeowner buys, I still have to review whether that home is going, and where the, and where their home going is.
I think that's a good one.
You talked with, with Roger about the street?
Yeah, I have, I put it in your, in your packets.
About the fulgur and everything?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The email came out, but we did not get a letter from him.
Okay.
An email.
I believe emails are illegally binding now.
Even tweets are.
That's what he's doing. He's tweeting you guys.
On Twitter, your findings, in fact?
No.
Question. Okay, how does this work? I understand the no cut zone and everything else. As time goes, trees grow. How can that turn out for safety reasons can be altered for height or distance?
You always have the ability to take a hazard tree.
I guess.
Actually, I have that in the...
That's a code enforcement question, is it? When you have hazard trees or dead trees that need evaluation?
Well, yeah, as long as it's sensible. If it doesn't sensible...
I just...
We have, we have it in the...
Well, he's got it in the funds.
Block number three, has that been resolved for the party ownership? You guys are all set with it?
Yes, yeah, it had been, it had been, it's somewhere in the paper trail that we're signing agreements.
Just looking at, at the notes, make sure we get everything covered. Deep restrictions on cutting on the buffer zone, we talked about peer review reimbursement.
Done.
That's what I like to hear. Cost estimates.
Yeah.
We've got costs and, do we have a planting schedule?
What does it... You want me to talk to what our...
Street tree.
Because we're preserving trees and...
That's right, you're not going to plant... No, 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 I'm talking about what you're showing on the, on seat 100.
Is there plants?
Yes, we've got plants of vegetation and...
I think they're called out. Ted's going to slap me because I think the plan... Yeah, yeah, that's, it's, I think it's called out by, it's defined that they have to be staggered every, it's every 10 feet and a...
What are your species?
Stagger directions. No, it's on the, it was a landscape.
Is this the one?
Yep, yeah, I created a plan.
14 foot channel.
Never is buffer plantings, and kind of...
Black sand tables.
Yeah.
Here's your typical cross section.
And it specifies minimum size.
Yep.
Yeah.
Trees on the species.
Well, typically, yellow, yellow pine.
No, it would be balsam or something like that.
See, that's why I shouldn't be doing this.
Eastern honey.
If you're going to put that in your ordinance, it has to be signed.
I agree with that.
Bald and perwack.
We'll see all fine.
What better way?
Well, we can, I mean, Walter, do you have a, what do you want?
Basically, I'm doing a combination of evergreens. So I have a combination of colorado spruce, blue spruce, some...
Got a remis from the landscape department. Not blue spruce? Indigenous, you want indigenous?
Well, actually, I actually talked with...
The lower branches die off.
We can talk with, I mean, one of the opponents was right here, Susan, and I basically told her that, you know, she could pick whatever tree she wants, and we, and we could pop them wherever she wants, and we're going to locate them specifically in our home. Once we see the road built, and she can see where the headlights are coming, so I've already had that combination. And I'm already...
We're going to type what's, because we don't have a plan.
I won't want to do that.
You're kind of hard, because my road, the road is built, grown into my road.
I'm Susan's son, and I'm a little 58, Laurel Lane, I live right across from, pretty much
almost across from my road. Be coming out above and beyond, facing the road, I mean...
Her house was the one that...
That's facing the development.
Concerns were expressed about the headlights coming out of the head of the road. The road was already repositioned at the head of where we were landing on. Laurel Lane to address that concern, and buffer trees is further attempting to address concerns over the headlights.
Is that lot 14?
Yeah.
The one that's right across the street is lot 14.
Yeah, and we, the...
It's listed now from my current.
Yeah.
It's Senate. It's indicted in my name.
Yep. So we're actually... Walter has to widen the road a little bit, so we widen on the other side, so actually the edge of, the edge of gravel, which eventually the edge of pavement is still in the same area. We got a plan, we can find that Laurel Lane. Yeah, all the work stays within the right of way of Laurel Lane.
Because that, the road was developed, and the road, trees just grew as they grow, and so, you know, looking, some of them are looking into the, would be the ditch or the over, it would be like, I was curious which ones would be, there's some spruce, there's some birch, there's some pine, they're all growing in front of my house at different levels. So I was asking which ones would be taken down and watered, so it depends on the surveyor looks at it, because then it has to be...
Agreed.
Well, I'd like to know what, this is...
Again, I actually sent an email to Susan earlier, and I told her, we're not going to be able to determine what vegetation is in there until I have a surveyor. I'll be setting stakes, set a line, so we can figure where the right of way is, before I know where the trees are.
The edge there, the...
And I told her, as soon as we have those stakes up there, we, I could walk with Susan, figure out what trees are in the way, and then we, we'll have to take those trees down if they're in the shoulders, you know, for the purpose, Roger doesn't want any vegetation under the shoulders. So at that time, that's when I'll sit with Susan and discuss where she wants the screening trees to help offset those other trees that we may have to take down. And that's, that's what we've agreed upon. Correct, Susan?
We just, we've agreed upon the screening trees in to wait until the road is done, and to see when actually things are moving in and out, so I can see how it affects my house, because I'm facing the road. I have big picture windows that face that direction. So that was what we agreed upon. The other, the, the trees that are in the, are on the edge of the road, we haven't necessarily agreed upon, because again, you can't tell me what they are, so...
Can't say exactly where the edge of the right of way is.
That's what I'm saying, we're not sure what it is, so, you know, if I have birch trees or pine trees or things that are close by that have been planted by my family, I want to discuss it before they're chopped down, or what we could do with that. So that's what I'm saying, where, what, what that version is. Not that there is any, I just want to say I wanted to have the amount of discussions since I've lived there so long.
Have we been given all the cost estimates?
The only ones we don't have are for vegetation, and 2500 on three, not a lot for two, I think that. 1200.
You can take a 2500 for each one, is probably what it's going to take to do either.
Yeah, 22 trees shown, you're not going to be able to do that for $2500.
Yeah.
Oh, you should put little sprigs in.
No, I put on six to eight foot, six to eight footers in the...
For 2500, for 22 of them?
Yes.
It's got its own excavation.
Yeah, I have one.
It's going to go bark of trees and put a bit of...
I have, I have one.
And if you want to put $3,000 down there, Ted, that's fine too, but I, I got a price with my wholesaler, who's a very good friend of mine.
First, I think the first thing we would have to do is we don't have a tree, we don't have a planting schedule for one, two, three, and, and the 14. So we need, it would have to be contingent upon coming up with a planting schedule and cost estimate, ruled by the town plan.
Who's our landscape work? Who's our landscape work?
If it works for me, because I have zero proof.
We see what happens when they let me.
That way, that way we can come up with something and not hold up tonight.
I'd just hold up the process. I'm going to do my job.
If the plan was to do it that way.
I do have a question for you, because I have never seen this word before. Bosque?
Bosque.
Bosque?
I just looked it up, I had to do that too.
Dickens, is that? I've never heard, I've never seen that word.
It means like Columbus trees.
I said, okay.
I know caucus for Columbus tree.
It's a French...
It's a Spanish term.
The landscape architect, I know.
It's not English, which is why I don't know what it is.
It's a dictionary.
Columbus, not a soil scientist?
Bosque, I don't, I'm not, that's not one, because I can tell you the technical term for a witcher.
I have a question about the cost estimates.
Wow.
Crotoquina. It seems like a minor expense item. How much in total is the cost estimate for, for escrow?
It's, including 10% intensity, it's $292,273.
So when you look at it, if this is off by two or $3,000 for, for the trees, I think it's, in the long run, it's...
Yeah, but this is, this is the poor item, and they're going to be asking for drawdowns for it. If you want me with whole money, because I mean, they're going to have to do it through me, if you want me to hope with whole money, you know, the complete sections of the job, then I could do that.
I'll put $10,000. Cash escrow, to cover whatever vegetation issues are until it's gone down?
And use it or not?
Excuse me?
Either you use it or not.
Correct.
Right, I think that that's...
And I've already had discussions with every opponent there, in terms of what we're going to do to appease these people.
I think that's more than fair.
And we've worked together with neighbors to make this work.
So if you spend $3,000, that's one thing, or you spend $7,000, it's another year coverage? I think that works.
Two seventy five dollars.
Yeah.
Never has it been going back to you anyways.
Correct.
Is there anything else that we need to look at? I just went down the check list from the preliminary. They changed lot one. We got the street tree thing, we just need to make sure that language is changed, and real three, and make the amendment on the plan.
Change for...
Existing...
Honey, if I had plans, can you take Timothy A. Karen off of your plans, because you no longer live there, you always needed on that one.
And are you no longer hyphenated?
I am no longer hyphenated, I'm Susan's son.
Although that's, that's still probably the way it appears at the registry.
It is not. It is not.
It's not at the registry? Oh, that's interesting, cause this would've come in after the registry.
Red, well, in, in Alfred, it's registered since August, it's been in completely in the-
But that's not signed, but-
Yeah, it was.
It's one for the day.
Yeah.
Stand up.
Right.
Yeah.
It could be changed.
Thank you.
Can I just raise a few as another, can I raise? Yeah, just first. So, I'll just-
Well, it's an, it's an unfortunate situation. The National Association of Corns shall prescribe no vegetation sitting hazard trees, shall be moved from no cut zones to any of the plants on overreached terrace. The mission of cut hazard trees must be declared by a current or previous officer. All right, we look, we would say-
Are you changing or adding any stuff?
Yep.
Item fourteen, yeah, item last, I, yeah, but who's leveling, so I have no idea what, I think he's still thinking.
I'm still thinking my normal one, I think, I, I also-
You mumble all this.
Show me the personalities in this, huh?
Oh, no, don't be giving that secret right here.
Who are you?
Roll tape.
Let's just sit up.
What are you thinking, Ted?
Well, this one, I can't, um- And say, no cut, number fourteen, and then it says, um, then I would add to it, the no cut zones defined as the front yard setback, each lot except on the driveway entrance, no greater than twenty-five feet. So, that's it, I want for you guys, I should do it. And give this, whoever's gonna do this, I assume it'll be the chair. Yes.
Did you let, prior to signature recording plan, change it to duck? To Davis Duck.
Put the wording in it to the change on the call. It'll be official, I don't know.
So while he does that, a couple of questions, Roger has looked at, just need to know if it's kind of dealt with. Redefining the cleaning of the ditches from South Spilly's Road to Station Number Three. To alleviate the drainage issues.
It's on the plan, yeah.
Twelve inch culvert has been up sized?
Fifteen inch, yeah.
Number two is to add ten inches of type three gravel.
Type D.
Yeah.
And that's on the plan.
Right, type D.
I think he was agreeing with the things that we had changed on the plans.
You're gonna realign existing, what was fifty-four inch?
Reline, not realign.
Okay, right.
They cover it like that, better than lining it up in place.
Lots of street crossing, forty-eight inches, yeah.
And he wants us to remind you that just because we've approved it does not mean the town will accept it as a town way.
And he's got asylum.
That's, that's all up to somebody else.
With, with, I told Roger, I've, yeah, so, he actually wanted me to remind you that the town keeps accepting roads and he doesn't have enough money, like-
That's okay, true shit. That's a political issue, we're not touching that one.
And I said, I don't think the planning board gives you your budget, so.
What determines, you know, whether the town can, will accept it or not?
Town meeting. Town meeting.
Now, town, town votes purely-
It'll be a town meeting.
Yes.
And, and they, uh, the residents would apply to have it deemed to be a town road, you go to the Board of Selectmen.
So the-
But Roger would sign it off first, though, before whatever reads that point.
No, we sign it up, comes, comes here.
The, the, the selectman will ask him if it meets standards, if it meets standards, they will, they will stick it on. If it meets standards, he's gonna say yes.
Okay, well, he can't just say no, he-
No. No, it has to, the legislature, on the people, the town, and they usually won't do it, and they won't accept the road unless Roger stands up, cause they will always ask, and they have, Roger, do you accept this road? And you will stand up and grudge him, they say yes, but I have more people to plow it.
Okay.
So what is the exception, if he doesn't have the money to maintain it?
There isn't. Yeah, that's all. That's all.
We will have a town engineer, a third party, uh, inspecting the road process as we go, correct, Ted?
Yes. Well, actually, you guys are gonna have to pay for that.
I understand that.
Okay. Yeah, that's in here, that you will have, we'll get a third party engineer in there, resident engineer to camp out.
Yep.
Actually, we'll camp out.
I know.
They'll be there at, at various points.
Like, we'll be an engineer, we'll be an E I T, it'll be something.
Are they able to make other points?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I guess I'm a little confused, in the minutes, ten nineteen, there was compromise that lot one is gonna be depicted and needed in a way that it leaves the field in front of it untouched. There was an initial depiction that did in fact depict the building envelope as being sold in the trees, and that looks like this layer is wanting to extend it into the field.
It will be in the field.
Once again.
Would, would it, in the location that it was at, it was then a fifty-foot setback that had to be moved?
Well, so, but there was a compromise, there was which that said that it would not touch the field. And, 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 and in fact, there was later, after that, there was a depiction of it in the woods. And then it was immediately kind of readjusted. And, I'm sure you guys-
Well, we beat the, yeah, Ted and I discussed this, this week, and it has to be a fifty-foot setback.
So after the compromise, this was the depiction, with building envelope sold in the trees.
Was it a compromise or a discussion?
There was no, there was no compromise.
Yeah, it was a discussion.
Well, so I have, I can quote the minutes if you guys would like.
It wasn't, I didn't agree to anything, as far as, no, kind of, but what I, what I said is all-
So it was a discussion, not a compromise?
That's correct.
I can quote.
It was discussion.
Does compromise implicit in the word compromise is that you reach some kind of agreement, so?
So, I can quote the minutes, I don't-
No, I just, I added to-
Okay, no, 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 I'm sorry, I, I-
To be clear on your terminology, that this could go on, so we'd wanna be clear.
I'm, I'm sorry, I- So that, that- That, I'm sorry, that was, I don't, maybe I shouldn't have used the word compromise at all.
Perhaps.
I'll, I'll quote the planning board.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Bergen makes suggestion, after concerns raised by Michael Mado of Butter, that the open field area closest to Mr. and those farm is needed in a way that ensures there remains untouched. Mr. Boladoffis seems to think that can be accommodated. And then Jason in the later letter says, we have also decreased the building of lot one per planning board in a butter request. And then it was, I have the depiction of how that was depicted in later, uh-
I think that related to lot size was what I was referring, remember, cause we had the lot that was bigger than two acres. But if you look, the, the building, I'm drawing it to grad here, might be-
What we did compromise on was the plantings between his own field.
So that is the now, the building envelope, so there's a hedge of trees, so there's a small-
So, so why was this ever depicted then?
It's not like-
Why was this one ever depicted here, with the building envelope, industry?
Because, well, because this law has had a lot of depictions.
Well, it came from, it, it had many permutations, I mean, it, it was not a static project that went through many provisions for many reasons.
We've, we've adjusted according to-
Minutes of the borders.
So I-
Almost did about seven iterations.
So-
That's, that's fair, that's like fair.
And like I said, uh, well, the, the compromise that we did made was that we would vegetate that field area between the farm and this home, that was the compromise that we agree upon, and all of that.
And the path of trees.
Where is that depicted in any minutes or any permanent reference, I guess?
Well, it's on the-
So I don't, so I didn't remember that at all.
It's on the plan, and they had to, they had to move things in order to maintain the setback.
The trees are on the one.
On top of you, we're pushing the setback from thirty feet to fifty.
See, why was that depicted here?
Because we had, that went, that, we had generated that.
Because there had been many iterations of the plan.
That's, that was deeper, you're so playing, but it was separate, it was, it was one of those.
And, and, thank you for bringing up Duck Conferencing Data Con and clarifying that. Um, and I guess, one thing I brought up last meeting was there's a, there's, I guess I'm confused about where the, the, kind of the planting language came out, cause there's a landscape buffering clause in the subdivision law that I brought up last time, it's nine point three dot one two dot two dot K landscape buffers. It says the development shall be designed with a continuous landscape area not less than fifty feet in width, which will contain no structures. The first twenty-five feet of the buffer strip, as measured, measured from the exterior boundaries of the development, shall contain evergreen shrubs, trees, fence, walls, or combination on all exterior lot lines of development.
So what's your point?
Where lot two, are there any, anything buffering around all the exterior lot lines of that?
Yes, that's about about two hundred feet open space.
And where is the? So I guess, I, I was hoping that was gonna be landscaped in some way, whereas a landscape buffer, we don't go.
But you're trying to maintain a natural landscape around all, all of the houses.
I thought the one sees. Well, then we would be disturbing him with a hundred feet of your rural pool.
And it'd be in the purpose of the field.
In the last meeting, you were complaining that you wanted to keep the open field.
I guess I'd-
Now you want trees?
I'd want, I guess I would.
I've seen Cameron do this, doesn't he?
Yeah, I can, I can see that, but I, in my mind, I would like to kind of, I guess this wasn't about necessarily preserving the field, but it was about preserving, preserving the rural character of the land.
I, I think I asked you this at one other meeting, so what's the end game to this discussion? What are you hoping, what are you, what, what final result are you hoping to get as a result of these questions? Do you want us to stop the process, or are we back to the rural pool discussion?
No, 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 I, 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 I-
I just really wanna understand.
I have, I have no intention of stopping the process, honestly, I think whatever has been worked out with neighbors and access from Laura Lane has been great. This is all about just preserving the rural character of my property. I worked incredibly hard to renovate it from the ground up. Um, it, my mom spoke last time about it, like, saying in the comprehensive plan, preserving farms, preferring, preferring, preserving rural culture. And I'm having two, I'm gonna be looking at two houses.
Should've bought it.
One in front of me, one to next to me.
I mean, I think they're trying to do as much as they possibly can to maintain a, a somewhat naturalistic landscape, they're not clearing it and planting little beds of pansies and, you know, dandelions and whatever. So, but he is a developer and he bought the land, and he has the right to develop it. So as much as you'd like to maintain your view, and I get that, cause I think we all, as landowners, experience that to a certain extent. You know, you don't get to control every aspect of the visual, you know, changes in what's gonna go on around you, unless you buy the land yourself. So.
So. Having said that, I make motion, the application is complete. And we get to the final, so thanks to the amendments that are written. We need a second.
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to determine the application for final approval complete. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we have a public hearing. We have a preliminary. And I'm asking, do we have, we have a final? No, we couldn't, we couldn't have a final, we haven't even been, well, complete for final approval. We had a preliminary public hearing.
The public review.
It just feels that way.
Yeah, yeah. If, if you've already finally approved it, what's the public got to do? We've already had our chance to speak, and we go ahead and speak, and we speak again, and it's already been approved, what?
Well, no, and, and I understand that. I, I'm simply asking, our procedure has always been to have a public hearing, and I'm asking the board if they wanna have a public hearing.
Do we have balloons and food and a celebration and-
Are you bringing them?
I'll bring whoopee pies.
Oh, and listen, we, hang on, if, if she's bringing whoopee pies, we need a public hearing.
So Ted, we have to have a final public hearing, but we've been, okay.
I thought we've had several public hearings.
Well, we've had a lot of discussion in any event, so I know we've had one public hearing and then it was a national, so.
If we're going to-
We'll have to notify the parent if they have.
H. So if the board decides, I'm sorry, no, eight, one H, the board shall determine whether to hold a public hearing on the final plan application. If we decide to hold one, we've gotta have one within thirty days, it does not say that we must, it says that we, that we will decide whether or not we're going to. So I'm asking, as a board, yes or no?
Yeah, make a motion we forego the public hearing.
That, that we do, Roger?
That we forego it.
Forego it, I'll second that.
A motion has been made and seconded to forego the public hearing, is there any discussion?
I, I just wanna be clear, it seems like, far as I can know, we all have some precedents.
We have.
And, um, this whole set of precedent for us, and kind of breaks precedents. Um, is, is that what we wanna do?
Well, we had it one public hearing, so even though it was preliminary, there were some conditional things that I think it was assumed that if Jason, the project met those conditions, that it would, you know, the things like the rural pool and everything else like that, that it would be deemed complete, so.
This has been on our agenda for how many times?
Months.
Half a dozen times?
Yeah.
A year.
Yeah, it does.
But we need to remember, most public hearings are two minutes. Um, I think, this, this is one of the largest developments the town has ever seen. Talked five.
If they'll get, yeah.
Talked five, certainly.
Yeah.
So. I, I think, as far as setting precedent, we will be seeing a lot more developments coming through town of this size. And I just don't wanna, um, change the, the precedent.
I, I, I agree with Tom, I'm afraid of setting precedent, because we always have had, after the final approval, we have always scheduled a public hearing for any applicant that's been before us. Not just, uh, major subdivisions, this is the first major subdivision that we've done in a very long time.
Could I interject? Could I interject on this, on this discussion?
I'll give you a sec, in just a minute.
Thank you.
I'm concerned that we end up setting precedent, and the next time it, it happens, somebody says, well, you didn't do it on the last one, why are you going to do it on mine?
Your ordinance.
And-
Your, your, your meaning is those grant of liberty, dispose paper review.
To me, that's-
If, I don't wanna squeeze in, though, that, that, um, chances are it'll be, it could be a two or three minute, meet, uh, public hearing.
If, if-
We've already squeezed out all the, all the other issues, I think it's just, as much protection for coming back and, and, and having a lawsuit over us, having favoritism over this, if that could happen. I'd rather protect ourselves and the town by just, just doing it the right way, there's, there aren't too many more objections that I can see coming, of course, that could change, as, as we know, but, but every important issue we've, we've, uh, we've asked for has been addressed. I don't see any surprise coming up, I think it's just, just a good way of covering, protecting you and the town, and just saying, it, it's been done the right way.
But it has been prolonged for a year, I think all of the-
But that, that has nothing to do with, with the, the planning board, it's certainly, is, things take time, R E P A, and, and, and all the, all the land swapping and all that, it does take time, but this, this might take only two or three minutes.
But it's still in thirty day delay, you know, it's another- But they also even, they make a discretionary, the board, so it's-
Yeah, this is, this is a board decision.
It's discretionary, so they do that on purpose, if they really wanted their grids on stone, they probably would've done that, too. So I think we've discussed it so much, that we can-
I agree, and I, and I think we've heard both views from the board, it seems to me we're in order for a vote.
And plus, we get a lot of complaints that, you know, the board makes it so difficult and time consuming, that, you know, you think you're done and you're never done, and, and I'm sure I'm one that wants it to sometimes drag on, but I think in this instance, we discussed it so much, I think we can move it along, that's my feeling, anyway. but I think in this instance, we discussed it so much, I think we can move it along, that's my feeling, anyway.
And before the vote, could I, could I speak something?
Okay.
I don't know how many developers have worked with neighbors who've ever stood making this process work. We eliminated, completed what we're doing. We changed the road designs, we're taking an existing road that's been in place with a substantial amount of neighbors that we've got working together to make this work for the town, make it work for the bodies, and making it work for, you know, the Zare. So my team, as far as I'm concerned, has gone way, way out above and beyond to make this work for everybody. And being that we're sitting here today and we've had really one comment from another or two, that, you know, we've, we've been addressing and addressing and addressing. You know, and every meeting has seemed, as far as I'm concerned, to be a public hearing, because there's been too much discussion where it should be specific to the facts of moving forward with the planning board process. And I appreciate, you know, what you folks do and I understand your legality issue of it, but it's been a year at this point. We've worked hard to make this work for the town, the bodies, and the developer. And I just hope that we could just look forward to that, I can, I could move forward in this process. Thank you.
On behalf of the planning board, I appreciate the fact that you have worked with the bodies. It has made this, uh, a much smoother process. I realize it doesn't seem that way, because it's, it's taken a year. But I, I commend you for working with these folks and getting everything done. Our question is a procedural question about a public hearing. We've always had it. The ordinance says that we have the option, but we have never denied that option. We have always said, yes, we're going to have a public hearing. And that seems to be the discussion that we're having. Given that, I don't, does anybody else have anything about the public hearing? In that case, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to have a, to not have a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There's two of us opposed. Motion passes, we will not have a public hearing. Onto the findings of fact. I hope I have all of these.
Do you want to give your vote?
Yeah. Okay. Arundel Planning Board findings of fact and approval motion for Oakwood Terrace subdivision final approval December twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Whereas on February fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, the planning board received from Oak Ridge Terrace LLC a subdivision pre-application to develop a fourteen lot cluster subdivision on seventy point zero eight acre parcel identified as tax map seventeen, Lot fifteen A, at the intersection of South Skilling's Road and Limerick Road in the R two and Shoreland Zones. Whereas on February twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, the planning board conducted a site walk of the proposed subdivision site. As a result of the public input from neighbors and holders, the applicant proposed to explore an alternative design for the subdivision that entailed improving the private way Laurel Lane to minor street standards and developing a seven hundred and fifty foot road named Oak Ridge Terrace off Laurel Lane to support the subdivision of eleven cluster lots on Lot fifteen A. Whereas on April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, the applicant submitted a preliminary subdivision application to the planning board with a proposed revised Oak Ridge Terrace Road and improvements to Laurel Lane. The applicant was required to make a number of substantive revisions to the plans in order to meet stormwater concerns, shoreline zoning requirements, road evaluations, and dimensional requirements. Whereas upon submission of revisions on October twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, the planning board deemed the preliminary application complete. Whereas on November seventh, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing. Whereas on November seventh, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board approved the preliminary subdivision application for Oak Ridge Terrace subdivision contingent upon the submission of eleven supplemental items. Whereas on December twelfth, two thousand nineteen, the applicant, applicant submitted a final subdivision application and supporting material for the proposed Oak Ridge Terrace subdivision. Whereupon the Arundel Planning Board has reviewed and given due consideration of the applicant's amended application and has arrived at the following findings. Findings of fact, number one, the owner with right title and interest of Tax Map seventeen, Lot fifteen A, and the Oak Ridge Terrace LLC and the applicant Walter Woods of Oak Ridge Terrace LLC. Number two, the applicant proposes to subdivide a forty-four point four six acre portion off the seventy point zero eight acre Tax Map seventeen, Lot fifteen A, and develop fourteen cluster lots and build a seven hundred and fifty foot road tentatively named Oak Ridge Terrace to provide legal frontage and access for nine of the fourteen new lots, as well as a fifty foot strip, access strip for the remaining twenty-two point four four undeveloped acres of Lot fifteen A retained for future development. I thought the, I, I, I'm sorry, I thought Oak Ridge Terrace serviced more than nine.
The road only.
The road itself.
Okay. Okay. Number three, net residential density calculations of unsuitable building area, including hydroic soils, wetlands, streams, and proposed roads yield a net residential area of fifty-one point two five acres. With the R two zones, two acre lot size minimum or maximum density of twenty-five lots can be subdivided on the property. Fourteen lots are proposed in the first phase, leaving eleven more lots available for development on the remaining twenty-two point four four acres, assuming no additional site development impediments are discovered. Number four, as a cluster subdivision, the applicant is proposing to dedicate thirty-two point five one acres to common open space to be managed and protected by the homeowners association. The configuration and linkage of the open space will facilitate pedestrian access throughout the dedicated open space provided crossings are constructed across Duck Brook. Number five, Lot one will establish legal frontage from Limerick Road while Lots Two and Three will be accessed from South Skilling's Road. Both roads are town maintained highways. Number six, all lots will be clustered and of reduced size ranging from fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet, Lot Three, to sixty-five thousand five hundred and eight square feet, Lot Five. Lots One and Two are proposed to be estate lots with buildable areas of sixty-two thousand twenty-seven square feet and forty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-nine square feet respectively, after the access strip is deleted. Number seven, all lots will be serviced by onsite wells and the applicant has provided documentation that all lots can be serviced by onsite septic systems. Number eight, the applicant is proposing to rebuild Laurel Lane up to minor street standards as required in section one point six point one of the Arundel Street Design and Construction Ordinance, so as to provide the proposed Oak Ridge Terrace with direct access to a public street. The applicant intends to petition the town for street acceptance once Laurel Lane is completed. Number nine, the proposed subdivision lots meet and exceed dimensional requirements for the R two district and meets the dimensional requirements for a cluster subdivision as outlined in section four point five and nine point three point twelve of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Number ten, the applicant has also demonstrated compliance with the Design and Dimensional Shoreland Zoning Standards of eight point six point two and eight point six point three and eight point six point six of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Number eleven, the applicant has submitted plans, sets, engineering, engineering drawings, and stormwater calculations prepared by Atlantic Resource Consultants dated April eleventh, two thousand nineteen, with revisions to December twelfth, two thousand nineteen. The property surveys were prepared by Horizon Engineering and dated June, two thousand nineteen, with revisions to December, two thousand nineteen. Hydrologic evaluations have been prepared by Summit Geoengineering and dated April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Conformance with Article eleven performance standards. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the final subdivision plan applications to be in conformance with the criteria of section eleven of the Arundel Subdivision Ordinance as follows. Eleven point one, water pollution. The proposed project will not discharge runoff directly into any water body and provides a method of disposal and treatment that will not require a license or permit from the main DEP and meets the town water pollution control standards. Eleven point two, water supply. The proposed subdivision is not within one thousand feet of a public water supply and therefore individual wells and onsite, onsite septic systems will be installed for each residential and commercial lot. The fire chief has required the applicant to install a thirty thousand gallon cistern on Lot eleven, Oak Ridge Terrace, with a pull-off apron and dry hydrant to provide fire protection. Additional future cisterns may be required to service future development of the remaining twenty-two point four four acres in Lot fifteen A. The applicant must provide these plans as part of the final subdivision approval application. Eleven point three, impact on existing water supplies. The proposed project will not require and therefore not impact established public water supplies or suppliers. Well logs from the surrounding property indicate adequate water supply for individual wells. Eleven point four, soil erosion control plan. The applicant has submitted a plan demonstrating adequate soil erosion control measures to protect downstream properties and expose slope during the construction process. Eleven point five, traffic conditions. The vehicle trip generation of this project onto South Skilling's Road is anticipated to be less than one hundred and twenty trips per day, thereby not achieving a level of service E rating during the peak hour. The applicant has provided future road accesses to adjacent, to, adjacent to the remaining land on Lot fifteen A from the proposed Oak Ridge Terrace. Eleven point six, sewage disposal. Sewage disposal shall be accompanied, accommodated by onsite septic systems. Documentation has been submitted to the board verifying soil suitability for onsite septic disposal. Eleven point seven, solid waste. The proposed project will not generate undue solid waste volumes that will tax the town's capacity to dispose of solid waste. Eleven point eight, impacts on scenic beauty, historic sites, and rare natural areas. The applicants have designated a large portion of the property for permanent open, open space that will be retained and maintained by the homeowners association. The limits of project cars' land removal are delineated on the record plans. There are no archaeological, historical, or critical shoreline areas identified on the site nor are any areas identified by the main natural heritage program on the site. The project is not located within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet of any beer wintering yard identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. No portion of the project is within, within a resource protection district. Eleven point nine, conformance with the comprehensive plan. The project is in conformance with the two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan for the R two district. Eleven point ten, financial and technical ability. The applicant has provided adequate evidence of technical capability to complete the project. The applicant will be required to provide a performance assurance for all proposed site and subdivision improvements, including the reconstruction of Laurel Lane as part of the final subdivision approval. Eleven point eleven, impact on water quality on, or shoreline. The project is not located in the watershed of Brimstone Pond and therefore exempt from standards of eleven point eleven. Eleven point twelve, impact upon groundwater quality. The applicant has prepared a groundwater impact study prepared by Summit Engineering that documents that the proposed subdivision will not increase NO three N concentrations above five milligrams per liter at the property line. The planning board does note that the proposed nutrient plumes for Lots Three to eleven do subsurfically discharging to wetlands on the site. The applicant's consultant testifies that the wetlands will adequately process the nutrient load before the plumes reach open water of Duck Brook. Eleven point thirteen, floodplain management. The project is located in a FEMA identified one hundred year floodplain. No homes are proposed to be located within the floodplain area. Eleven point fourteen, freshwater, freshwater wetlands. The applicant has identified all freshwater wetlands on the project site and has designated the project to have minimal impact upon these resources. The applicant will maintain a seventy-five foot stream setback from designated onsite streams, a fifty foot buffer from shoreline overly forested wetlands, and a one hundred foot buffer from wetlands containing predominantly emergent vegetation. Wetlands filling can only occur in the driveway to Lot number two. Eleven point fifteen, stormwater management. The planning board has determined that the proposed project will have negligible impact on stormwater discharge for the two, five, ten, and twenty-five year frequency storms. Eleven point sixteen, reservation of open space commonly as fire protection facilities and private ways. The applicant is preserving thirty-two point five one acres of permanent open space that will be accessible to the residents of the development. Thereby, be it resolved, based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the preliminary subdivision application of Walter Woods and Oakwood Terrace LLC for the development of a fourteen lot cluster subdivision on a seventy point zero eight acre parcel identified as tax map seventeen, Lot fifteen A, at the intersection of South Skilling's Road and Limerick Road in the R two and Shoreland Zones.
Chair?
Yes.
We, uh, we amend that to say the final subdivision plan.
Increase the word preliminary.
Oh, did I really? I'm sorry.
I had a deja vu.
Yeah, well, that's okay. There wasn't a year for preliminary. Oh, yes, okay.
Therefore, be it resolved.
Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the final subdivision application of Walter Woods and Oak Ridge Terrace LLC for the development of a fourteen lot cluster subdivision on a seventy point zero eight acre parcel identified as tax map seventeen, Lot fifteen A, at the intersection of South Skilling's Road and Limerick Road in the R two and Shoreland Zones. Number one, the subdivision must be recorded in New York County Registry of Deed within ninety days of the date upon which the plan is approved and signed by the board. Otherwise, it shall become null and void. Number two, no changes, erasches, modifications, or revisions shall be made in any final plan after approval has been given by the board and endorsed in writing on the plan, unless the revised final plan is first submitted and the board approves any modifications. Number three, the approval by the board of this subdivision plan shall not be deemed to constitute or be evidence of any acceptance by the municipality of any street easement or other open space shown on the plan. Number four, no construction shall proceed until the Arundel Fire Chief approves the design plan specifications and surety for the thirty thousand gallon cistern required for installation off Oak Ridge Terrace at Lot number eleven. Number five, the applicant shall not seek a building permit for Lot One until the applicant has submitted a landscape plan specifying species, type, size, and quantity of the conifer buffers proposed on Lots One and Two. Number six, failure to complete substantial construction of the subdivision within two years of the date of the approval of the plan shall render the subdivision null and void. Number seven, before any construction activity commences on the site, the applicant shall submit to the town planner a monetary performance assurance in the amount of three hundred and two thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars plus the installation cost of the landscape buffer strips proposed for Lots One, Two, and the current lot, map ten, Lot fourteen, in one of the instruments sanctioned in Article thirteen of the Arundel Subdivision. Seven A, yes.
We'll strike the landscaping.
That's included in, okay. We will strike.
Number seven?
Not, no, just the installation cost of the landscape buffer strippers, buffer strips proposed for Lots One, Two, and current lot, map ten, Lot fourteen, will be stripping.
So pretty much anything after the figure, dollar figure, or?
Anything after the dollar figure.
Okay.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Question, turn it on. Maintenance of the thirty thousand gallon cistern is where you had read under number four. Who?
Tom, Tom, we're going to put it properly together.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to check, because there was discussions before. And that's why I was asking the question. Thank you.
That easement has been granted to the tenant of the Arundel for maintenance of that facility and then repair or replacement of that facility.
Seven A. The title Duck Fawn in record plans shall be changed to Davis Pond. Number eight, at least five days prior to commencing construction, required improvements, the subdivider or builder shall. A, nope.
Would they come? We don't have to. You adding that?
Yes, it was added, yeah.
Yeah, just maybe seven A.
Eight A, notify the codes enforcement officer and town planner in writing with the commencement of construction of such improvements, so that the municipal officers can cause inspection to be made to assure that all municipal specifications, requirements, and conditions of approval shall be met during the construction of required improvements and to assure the satisfactory completion of improvements and utilities required by the board. B, deposit with the municipal officers, officers a check for the amount to pay for the cost of inspection by a third party engineer. The applicant has an option of signing a promissory note to reimburse the town of Arundel for third party inspections as work progresses. Number nine, between November first and November fifteenth. Really?
Yeah, it's in the ordinance.
Between November first and November fifteenth, the town shall, at the expense of the subdivider, have the site inspected by a qualified individual. By December first of each year during which construction was done on the site, the inspector shall submit a report to the board based on that inspection, addressing whether stormwater and erosion control measures, both temporary and permanent, are in place, are properly installed, and appear adequate. The report shall also include a discussion and recommendation of any problems that were encountered. Number ten, upon completion of street construction, the subdivider shall submit to the town planner as-built plans of all infrastructure improvements. Number eleven, the subdivider shall be required to maintain all improvements and provide for snow removal on streets and sidewalks until their control is placed within a lot owners association. Number twelve, the subdivider shall record. Number twelve, the subdivider shall record deeds transferring ownership to the association when within forty-five days of the final completion and inspection of the subdivision. A copy of the recorded deed shall be submitted to the town planner within sixty days of final approval. Number thirteen, the applicant shall include a restriction on all subdivision deeds and divisions in the homeowners association covenants prohibiting vegetational clearing within town of Arundel's seventy-five foot stream buffer or within fifty to one hundred feet of wetlands as delineated on the record subdivision plan without prior approval by the Arundel Planning Board. Such covenants shall also prohibit cutting of any existing vegetation within twenty-five feet of the project property line on lots one, two, three, four, and fourteen. The homeowners association covenants shall prescribe that no vegetation excepting hazard trees shall be removed from the no-cut zones delineated on the record plans along Oak Ridge Terrace. Permission to cut hazard trees must be granted by the Arundel code enforcement officer prior to removal. The no-cut zone is defined as the front yard setback of each lot excepting driveway entrance of no more than twenty-five feet. I think we're at a lot. Men normally use what, twenty-five to thirty-five thousand words a day, and I just ran out. I think I used them all right here. I did have a question, and I should have stopped to ask you about it. And since I didn't, and I don't see it again, so I'm gonna keep my mouth off. Need a motion to accept.
I will. I second it.
Motion has been made by Jens and seconded by Susan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations.
You need to give us the record bylaws, get your copy of this. We'll sign it.
As long as it says Davis Pond.
So I, I care.
Do you like it on the mile?
Yeah. Where, you know, that is a lot.
Want all that?
Jason, is all the power underground? Are you gonna put all the power to this project underground? I think that's great.
You amend that to say.
It was very sound.
She came up, and somebody told her about the.
Nobody's.
And she went down. And. Because we don't regulate. Well, we gotta get a letter that they say, are you leaving company?
Okay. Let's move on. So we can actually have a match. Moving right on. American Iron and Metal major conditional use application and determination of completeness, an application for renewal and expired conditional use permits for forty-three thousand square foot solid waste disposal facility, a metal recycling yard located on a twenty-two point nine acre parcel located at twenty-two forty-four Horgino Tax Map twelve lot nine in the Al District. American Iron and Metal is an applicant with CES who is rated as the agent. It is my understanding that you have talked with the town planner about the closing plan, and you have made arrangements to give him money.
Exactly, that's right, yeah.
Which is what this whole thing came down to.
That's right.
Because we've done the site.
Doesn't it always?
No, it's just about money, usually.
Yeah. Yeah, so that was a good recap. Again, my name is Chip Haskell. I am a professional engineer with CES representing AIM tonight. Just as a brief recap here, obviously, we were here at the last, an hour last meeting anyway. I don't believe it was your last meeting, but last time we were here, we, I believe, the final issue was related to the request for some additional information on the insurance guarantee relative to the closure of the site. Following that meeting, we went back and created a memo that basically outlined the site's obligations with the DEP relative to closure as well. And I don't know if you've all had a chance to read that memo yet or not, but I think it's helpful to just kind of put a little bit in context as to what their other obligations are and how they are relatively similar to what the town does require. In general, they require, you know, the materials to be taken off the site and that site to be left in a clean and safe manner. The town obviously has now requested some consideration for the potential for remediation at the site. The, I can say that there have been, there have been a number of tests done in the past as part of normal operations with cleaning some of the ponds, and nothing there has suggested any, any reason to suspect any reason for remediation in the future. With that said, you know, we want to be good neighbors here in Arundel and have allotted for a level of remediation, let's see sort of our step-by-step plan for closure in that memo. It includes everything that we had before. In addition to that, we also removed six inches of soil on the site where it's currently gravel and testing that soil, disposing of it properly, bringing in six inches of clean gravel and stabilizing that site. In total, that estimate comes to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and the applicant has agreed to provide a performance guarantee in that amount.
Does the board have any questions?
I do. So, sorry. That's what happens when I read these things before I come here. So, thank you very much for making those changes because, as you know, I was a loud voice and wanting some remediation addressed. So the only part of the remediation that really isn't addressed is the groundwater. And so my question to you is, I understand the DEP takes some responsibility for remediation and tracking you down.
Yep.
But in the meantime, and I asked Tad this as well, then who's on the hook if this, financially, if this has to be remediated and you left Dodge and we can't find you?
Ultimately, it is the state and federal government's responsibility to remediate that to a certain degree.
And they pay for that out of their goodwill or do they work for you?
Absolutely.
Or do they look to us if they can't find you?
No, no. They have, so AIM has licenses, you know, state and federal licenses, and in all of those licenses, they have performance guarantees set up for that portion of it as well. But in all cases, you know, if that facility is going to close, they go through the steps to do that. If it's a closure where, I guess it's not amicable, so to speak, and the site is closed and they're not willing to do it, it would come down again. At that point, it's gonna be on the state and federal government, and they're going to, I mean, that's what you see those super fund sites and all that, you know? It gets to that realm. This would, I'm quite confident we can get to that point.
Right, you said that last time, and we ended up from fourteen thousand dollars to two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So that's a fairly large jump. But, because I thought it was curious that you left out, you being a global you, groundwater remediation, but included remediation of everything else.
Sure, sure.
So, you know.
The reasoning there, I mean, we have to take a reasonable look at this, and I think in our interpretation, I mean, short of drilling, monitoring wells, and figuring that out, it's not required by the DEP to do that for one. But what we think, what we look at is say, okay, well, all of the stormwater on this site is going to these ponds. And if there is a worst-case scenario for contamination that is going to enter groundwater, it's going to be from those ponds. So if we sample in those ponds, we have, we have good information from that, from those samples that show that we're not even close to the hazardous level.
Right now. Right now.
Sure, yep. And we're required to keep it that way under our purpose. You know, so they have, they have standards they have to uphold with the DEP, with the town, with the federal government as far as spill practices and erosion control and operationally what they, what they're allowed to do on that site. And, you know, that sort of controls what can happen there and the risks that can be associated with it. So in this case, we feel like we've provided certainly a reasonable estimation of what could potentially be a remediation in this, in this case.
A remediation of everything but the groundwater?
Yeah, I suppose. I guess, I'm not sure what remediation of groundwater would entail in this case. I don't think there's any, anything we've found to point to anything. I understand what you're saying, that in the future, somebody could spill something that could affect groundwater, I suppose. But I don't know how we even look at that, I guess.
You test the water that's in the ponds, correct?
We tested the soil that came out of those ponds. So that soil would be, if anything, that is gonna be super concentrated of any of the chemicals that are going to be put into the pond.
When did you test that soil?
That one, I believe, was done in two thousand sixteen.
Okay. And how often did they get tested?
Every time they get cleaned out.
And how often is that?
It's dependent on use. So as they fill up with sediment, right, that sediment, we have to clean that sediment out so that those ponds are still functional. And, you know, it takes a number of years, but, you know, that was recent, both of those were recently done.
Do you send the results of the testing to DEP and to the feds?
Nope, there's no requirement to do that. What we have to do is dispose of that material in an illegal manner, and they have to go to licensed facilities. So those licensed facilities do have to see those test results, and those test results have to meet certain, certain, you know, levels. And they test for metals and you name it. It's called RECA eight metals, RECA eight, and that's arsenic, barium, cadmium, chromium, lead, mercury, selenium, and silver.
Yeah, I saw that list.
Yeah, good tongue tie, right?
The sedimentation that goes into the ponds, that reaches their naturally, it's not put there, it's a natural process?
Yeah, that's correct. So, I mean, those ponds are designed to be sedimentation ponds. Those are there for the DEP, and essentially, they are, they're there so that it's designed so that the stormwater from this site brings to that sedimentation pond, collects that water, treats it before it leaves the site.
So the accumulation rate has been variable over time?
Of sediment? I think it's relatively constant. You know, we just, they noticed during a DEP inspection that it was, it was starting to get a little bit full and back in two thousand, again, I believe it was sixteen, they cleaned that pond out and restored it to.
Isn't that gonna be the canary in the coal mine?
Explain, explain your thought process there, I guess, while we please.
If there's gonna be a problem with the quote or the groundwater, it's gonna show up there first.
Well, that's, that's kind of what our, what our thought is. So if we test that soil, then that's a pretty good indicator of what's potentially below. If that soil is below those levels, then we have, you know, that's a pretty good, pretty good litmus test.
How about making the results of those periodic litmus tests disclosed?
Sure. I mean, we've got, we have at least.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be?
Well, because there's no agents, public agency, or any kind of public oversight, so they're cleaning, they're taking measurements, they're cleaning it out, they're disposing of it, but it's, you know, no one else is sort of in the loop in terms of what you found, what you're disposing of, and.
We do have to take water quality samples.
That's what I'm saying, though, that information isn't being disseminated to any public agency or public oversight.
The soil samples are not. The water quality samples that we take from the fall applications are. Those are, but those are really, those are required by the DEP.
So this question would be directed both at you and at Tad. So first of all, the money that is gonna be set aside, is escrow, is it, is it actual funds or is it, is it, it's a surety, right?
It would likely be.
It's potentially there?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it, is it something that can be tapped in to pay for the cost of the analysis of the sedimentation samples that are periodically done so that there would be disclosure and analysis of those samples that would be provided to the town, with the testing process paid for by AIM or out of that fund?
Yeah, I mean, I would say as, as frequently as we need to, you know, clean those ponds out whenever that casting needs to happen, or we can, I think we can provide that information to.
So we would get the test results for the, for the water in addition to the sediment? Because right now, you're testing the water, but we're not, we have no information or there's no state agency that has information about what the sediment says. So you could be cleaning out the water and the sediment, you know, as it accumulates impurities, it can go into the groundwater, and the water may say one thing, and the impurities in the sediment may be something completely different.
Yeah, so we can, we can certainly provide those soil sample, you know, the soil analysis. Those, again, those have to be a certain, certain level in order to even be disposed of.
What would you do with that information, though? What would the town do?
I think what the town would do would be, would be to have it looked at by a professional. We don't want to incur the cost of doing that. It should come out of them.
It has to be analyzed.
Information that would also be.
I mean, would it be fair to say that if they are, if they are able to be disposed of at one of these facilities, that those facilities cannot take, you know, an actual hazardous waste? So if we're able to, if we can show that we were, that we actually did dispose of it at one of those facilities based on these test results, then therefore it would mean that it met those requirements and it's of good quality.
So then you would have to provide, I would think, we would want you to provide proof that you disposed of it and that you disposed of it with some kind of.
A licensed facility.
So my thought on having the report, I don't know what the levels are, but so let's, let's say it's a level one, and you start off and it's at point two five, and it goes to point three, it goes to point, there's a history of it starting to go up. I would like to know that that is starting to go up. I lived next to a super fund site in Sanford that they didn't bother to tell us about. We just noticed that the water was orange and didn't freeze. We knew there was a problem.
Something wrong there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Chair?
Marty?
Question now, recently hearing over the news and everything else, the different water testings and everything else along the way, they have found a lot of the different water testings aren't testing for, was it P, C, A, C, or whatever else?
P fast, yeah. That's a, that's a new, a new thing, yeah.
Is that.
We're worried posted children for.
Oh, are you? Lucky you.
Is that being tested in the water samples?
At this point, I don't, I don't know. I don't believe so.
Okay, well, that's what, that's what I was requiring about the idea of, because you sometimes take demolition in or whatever else not, and fires or whatever along the way, and they say a lot of that stuff has been caused by purple K or whatever else not, and it has infiltrated, the powders have infiltrated into the water somehow.
Yep.
And I was just wondering as a thought, because they're discovering more and more of this around, would that be one of the listings of, instead of rating, or arsenic, this, that, or anything else?
Sure.
And, but it is becoming more and more.
Yeah, I think.
Throughout, throughout the towns.
Yeah.
That's why I ask.
I think to answer your question, right now, I don't believe it's anything that is a mandated test, but I believe it's probably coming down, down, down the road pretty quickly from, it's gonna come down from DEP and EPA to test for that, and when that happens, I'm certain the site will be subject to it as well.
So I think that I personally would like something included in, in the findings of fact, that you are going to keep current or keep abreast of new things in terms of additions, deletions to current testing, so that we know you're not doing a test from nineteen fifty-six and you're actually doing a test from, you know, two thousand twenty.
Sure. I mean, we have to, in order, in order to abide by our other licenses, that's, that's what drives all of that.
I'm not, I'm not overly concerned about that because DEP and EPA will make sure that you do that.
Right.
I just want us to get copies.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I would propose, and it sounds, I guess what I would propose, and if it sounds like it's agreeable, is that, you know. I guess what I would propose, and if it sounds like it's agreeable, is that, you know, at such times, these ponds are, are cleaned out again. We will provide proof to the town that that material has been disposed of at a licensed facility.
And what, you're going to, you're going to test it to find out whether.
We have to, in order, in order to, in order to actually dispose of it, we have to test.
So give us the information on the disposal and the, the test report that says this is.
We can give you, we can give you the soil analysis as well. I don't know if you'd want to have it reviewed, I mean, yeah, if it was accepted by the facility, then, then it's good for, you know, it meets those requirements, but we can certainly provide that information.
But I think we'd like to have it in your file, and I think we'd like to know where you disposed, you know, the name of the facility, where you disposed, just, again, if we, if something happens and you're not available, that we want to be able to.
Sure.
Have that information.
Let me, is that acceptable?
Ted, did we miss anything?
No. Because, you know, you would be receiving periodic, how often do you do that, like three years or something?
Again, it's tough to say. I, I imagine probably in the next three to four years, it's probably going to need to get cleaned out again. We'll see.
So when they come for renewal, which may be three years.
Yeah.
They're going to have to give us whatever bit of tests they have.
If, if.
Of those, of those sediment, well, you have some tests from some period.
Yes, we have some.
So the latest tests, like the last tests.
Yep.
And before you close up, we get copies of the latest, do they have to, before they close up shop? Let's just say they're leaving, and would there be a current test of what was in those ponds before they leave?
DEP will come in at that point.
DEP's going to come in for one, but we also allot it for soil testing and analysis.
Before you go?
Yes.
In the event that you do that.
Part of the surety, that's part of the, the line on the surety. And, and I'm sure that, right now, I bet you have intentions of leaving, unless we try to crazy, but.
Not, not that I'm aware of, but these guys will be the ones to tell you.
We're trying, we're trying to grow, not run away.
Well, you get a twenty-five million dollar offer for your facility and your lot, then, why don't you go?
You're offering that?
Stranger things have happened, not right now, but.
You got something going on.
I'm just saying, um, okay, well, I'm okay with that. I just think it, we need some oversight so we know.
So we'll, we'll make that requirement on the floor. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Oh, you've got that fence that's broken.
You want that fixed?
Well, I want something because I know children fall into ponds.
Right. I'm sure, I'm sure that can be mentioned.
Okay, that'd be great.
Right.
Just to.
That's what I love about the office.
I don't know who owns the fence, but some, something is going to wander.
That's a small pond, that's only about this deep, so if somebody falls in there, it's probably going to be a cat. We'll, we'll fix the fence.
Or what's in it than how deep it is.
I'll go over there, I'll, I'll go over there and drink out of my pond.
No, no, that's perfectly.
I've seen the test results. We, we, we will fix it.
Okay, if you don't mind.
Assuming it's under property.
Assuming it is.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Surety, does the board, does the board have a problem with the bond? Because we usually take bonds for gravel pits and other solid waste facilities. This is a solid waste facility, that's reasonable. I don't want to be holding two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I wonder, does my attorney want to file ten ninety-nine somewhere?
So it was, it was more cost effective for you guys to put up a bond than it is to get an insurance policy?
Uh, they'll evaluate that. I think, you know, I didn't say one way or the other what that performance guarantee would be. The discussions at this point were, you know, certainly looking at the bond and what that cost is, and they'll have to, they'll have to evaluate that with their, with their bonding company versus their insurance company.
Right.
We'll see what happens.
Yeah, I thought that was interesting.
Yeah. They do want that flexibility, though, to kind of decide what works best for them.
I think you should have it, yeah, absolutely. Okay, I don't, believe it or not, I'm out of questions.
Well, in that case, findings of fact and motion for approval, conditional use permit for American Iron and Metal LP, limited partnership? I thought you were an LLC.
No.
It's a limited partnership. Whereas on May eighth, two thousand fourteen, a three-year major conditional use permit to American Iron and Metal LP to continue operations of an existing forty-three thousand square foot plus or minus solid waste recycling facility on twenty-two point nine acre site located at twenty-two forty-four Portland Road, tax map twelve lot nine in the BI district contingent upon the provision of assurances that AIM management had resources sufficient to close and restore the existing solid waste site in the event of closure. Whereas the applicant's major conditional use permit expired on May eighth, two thousand seventeen. Whereas on May twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, the planning board received a major conditional use application from American Iron and Metal LP to resume operation of an existing forty-three thousand plus or minus square foot solid waste recycling facility on a twenty-two point nine acre site located at twenty-two forty-four Portland Road, tax map twelve lot nine in the BI district, contingent upon provision of assurances that AIM management had resources sufficient to close out and restore the existing solid waste site in the event of closure. Whereas on June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board conducted an advertised site, public sidewalk on the premises. Whereas on July eleventh, two thousand fourteen, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing on a proposed project. Whereas the Arundel Planning Board has granted the applicant two sixty-day extensions to prepare a closure plan and surety estimate as required in Land Use Ordinance Section nine three thirty-eight seven. And whereas after due review and consideration of the application and supporting documents, the Arundel Planning Board has arrived at the following findings of fact. One, the applicant and owner of the property is American Iron and Metal LP. Number two, the property is located at twenty-two forty-four Portland Road, tax map twelve lot nine in the BI district. Number three, the property has been used for the past twenty years as a solid waste recycling facility specializing in the collection, reduction, and exporting of recycled metals. Number four, as depicted on the application and accompanying maps prepared by civil consultants dated May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, the applicant proposes to re-permit the recycling facility to process the same type of metal materials that the facility has historically processed. The applicant has previously installed a ten-foot by twenty-foot scale house, a second vehicle weighing scale, a RadCom detection unit installed, ten parking spaces, reduced the driveway entrance to forty-two feet in width, and installed a twenty-nine-foot landscape island between Route one and the customer parking area. Number five, all other recycling areas and collection points are to remain as shown on the existing conditions map prepared by civil consultants dated May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Number six, the driveway entrance maintains a site distance in excess of six hundred feet to the north and south along Route one in conformance with the minimum site distances for a fifty mile per hour road as specified in Section five twenty-one one of the Land Use Ordinance. Number seven, the applicant has both a current and active solid waste permit and stormwater permit from the main apartment of environmental protection. All peak runoff will be contained on the site and all runoff is collected in stormwater treatment ponds. Number eight, water service is provided by the Kennybunk, Kennybunk Portwells Water District from the Route one mains, and onsite septic is provided by a onsite septic system. Number nine, no new site lighting is proposed. Number ten, the planning board has determined that existing vegetation with limits of cutting, as depicted on the existing conditions plan will set, will be sufficient to meet all landscaping and parking lot buffering standards of the BI district to the side of rear property boundaries. Number eleven, the applicant has submitted proof of liability insurance in the amount of one million dollars per occurrence and two million dollars total. Number twelve, the applicant has submitted a revised closure plan and an itemized budget for contaminant testing and theoretical soil removal and remediation. At such time the facility closes, the applicant has proposed a surety in an amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
My question, um, on number eleven, it ends with and, two million dollars.
And two million.
Is that in total or is it?
Yeah, it should be in, in, in total for the event.
Okay.
So that's two million dollars in total per event or in total?
That's a good question.
Whatever's in the ordinance is what we're finding, I don't know.
So we just need a phrase to finish that.
All right, let me get you the phrase. It's nine. Annually, wow, at least one million dollars per occurrence and two million dollars annually for accident occurrences during the life of the facility plus thirty years.
Okay. So we should add that.
We should, we should add that. So it's the applicant, number eleven, the applicant has submitted proof of liability insurance in the amount of one million dollars per occurrence and two million dollars annually.
For accidental occurrences during the, the active life of the facility.
So will you plug that in, Ted?
Yes, ma'am.
Cory doesn't have to write all of them. Great.
Okay, conformance with conditional use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of Section nine two nine of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows, nine two nine one. That the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring properties. The uses and sizes of the structure are similar in scale and scope to surrounding properties and other land uses in the BI district.
Move that we approve that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to approve nine two nine one. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Nine two nine two, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that the comprehensive plan permits solid waste facilities for the BI district as conditional uses, and therefore the proposed use is in conformance with the two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan.
Move second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Nine two nine three, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The existing operation will not generate a significant increase in trip generation, the applicant's driveway site distances exceed the minimum standards of Section five twenty-one one, and the applicant has received an M D O T driveway opening permit for the proposed facility.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for nine two nine three, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Nine two nine four, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. Existing onsite septic will be provided onsite and water is provided to the site by Kennybunk, Kennybunk Portwells Water District. The proposed use will not increase the demands for water or septic flow on the property.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded for nine two nine four, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Nine seven nine five, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties in that noise, the nature of the business does generate noise from crushing and unloading materials. However, the board finds that the proposed sound levels are not unreasonable for the use or the district and meets sound level standards mandated in Land Use Ordinance Section five eleven one at the property line. Odor, this use will not generate any odor issues. Vibration or smoke, no vibration or smoke issues are generated onsite. Clear, the applicant is not proposing to add any additional lighting onsite.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for nine seven nine five. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Nine two nine six, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soils, drainage, and vegetative cover are suitable for the proposed use. The applicant proposes no site modifications that would impact the existing slope and drainage conditions on the site.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for nine two nine six, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Nine two nine seven, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. The applicant has provided adequate documentation that hazard mitigation and containment provisions are installed in the, at operational facility to minimize nuisances generated by the proposed use.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded for nine two nine seven, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Nine two nine eight, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant has demonstrated financial and technical capacity to operate and close the facility and therefore is in compliance with Section nine three thirty-eight seven C of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. The applicant has met all pertinent portions of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance in the design of the proposed facilities.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for nine two nine eight. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Therefore, be it resolved, that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the conditional use application of American Iron and Metal LP to operate a solid waste facility as herein presented, contingent upon the following. Number one, any change from the approved plans shall require submission of revised plans to the board. Number two, the applicant shall submit a surety to the town planner in the amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to cover closure costs. Number three, this permit expires on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two and must be renewed prior to the permit expiration. Number four, any testing of pond water or sediment needs to have the results delivered to the town planner.
Who wants to put the water in that too? I don't know what.
Yes, the water, the sediment.
Because the water is going, is being reported to the DEB.
Right.
And the location where it's been disposed of?
Yeah, the location of the facility that takes the sediment.
Right.
The saving, the disposal.
Right. The recipient, yeah.
Yep.
Need a motion?
How would we approve as read and edited?
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded for approval. Any discussion?
Yes. They know the permit is going to expire, okay? Please start the process at minimum six months before expiration date.
Yeah, that's just a notice for you guys so that this doesn't happen.
Happen again, huh?
If it happens again.
Yeah, yeah.
The town doesn't necessarily send out.
We don't send notices. We figure, we're all adults and it's our permits, we should pay attention.
I, I think the lesson learned.
And it does happen, it falls for.
Okay, that's in discussion, now we can vote.
Walk on that and my one. And so maybe two miles and a paper.
Motion was made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Am I opposed? It's unanimous. Now we're done.
Okay.
Two miles and a paper?
Two miles and two papers, one miles for you, one miles for me.
Okay.
One papers for you, one papers.
All right.
Okay. You get that to me, we'll give more time at the same time.
Okay. Do you have any specific language you have on your approval blocks or something?
It says, approve by.
You made it, you survived.
Hopefully your night doesn't go on too, too much longer.
I think we're getting there.
New application. Arundel Grange LLC zoning amendment to the Townhouse Corner District, a request to reduce the minimum residential unit density to twenty thousand square feet with sewer or water to eight thousand square feet in the Townhouse Corner District. The request is specifically for rental apartment units of Arundel Grange LLC, the owner, John, is the applicant, Robert Metcalf, the official and associate, is the applicant's agent. And I am assuming you're Mr. Metcalf.
I am, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I am Robert Metcalf, a functional associate representing Mr. Fitzpatrick Grange. Uh, it is, it's a pretty straightforward, uh, thank you, maybe in terms of minimum block size requirements for multifamily related requirements. Uh, the documentation we submitted earlier, uh, for the application, we have a landmark. So one of us all understand that global workforce housing is an issue, and I'm very, uh, not only in Maine, but in the country. In fact, my Kennybunk's planning board and county planning committee, and we're looking at how to address it today, and I'm working on a case in Kennybunk for it to see how they may be able to address the poor housing on that particular site, so it's, it's quite to the forefront. And, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick came in and spoke with Ted before I became involved with the project. The property is, you probably all know, it's former Hartwood School College of Art, and they have a rear building in the back of the dormitories, there are now four apartments in there. And he has had, every time a unit becomes available, he's had such an influx of people clamoring to try and get a unit to rent. And I believe every one of them are rented down. And I believe every one of them rented now is to single moms, two kids. So he has kind of a conscious that he really wants to deal with providing the opportunity for, providing affordable housing. And the Grange building itself, uh, when the college left, when there was a daycare there, they had changed out the septic system specifically for the Grange Hall itself, uh, and it had a system variance on it. And the capacity for that system can accommodate numerous additional apartments, bedrooms, if you will, uh, on the site. And so we've done an analysis of what that capacity is, what he thinks the building could be, and, uh, so the eight thousand square feet we generated based on is the capacity of what their current leach field can accommodate. The, well, it turns around so I can show you what the parcel is anyway, so. So yeah, it was the Grange building, and then this is the four-unit apartment in the rear. It has its own leach field for the four units back here. The leach field for the Grange is located on this side over here. So basically what we're looking at is how to come up with some efficient, affordable units, and, uh, that's when he went to meet with Ted to figure out how we could approach this project, and that's why we're before the board to discuss the potential of doing an amendment, specifically changing the minimum area only for the apartments. It's not necessarily geared towards trying to improve density for other potential residential uses. So what we did is we looked at the Townhouse Square, Town, I know I was gonna say that again, Townhouse Square, uh, Townhouse Corner District to get an idea in terms of what the land area that encompasses what is defined as the zone. So these parcels along Log Cabin Road and then parcels along, uh, Arundel Road, this is the parcel for the Granges. There are twenty-eight lots out there, total acreage roughly is a little over forty-nine acres, uh, more than half the lots are two acres in size. There's the largest one, I think is like five, almost five and a half acres. Public water is available along Arundel Road. The Water District, I spoke with them, uh, they recently, probably also are upgraded the line on North Street to increase the size of the main itself. And I had a conversation with them in regards of, uh, future extensions of the line. It is feasible to extend it down Log Cabin Road to provide access. It is not something in their capital improvement budget. However, that being said, they did offer that if, you know, the size of the line to serve these parcels along here doesn't necessarily require going to a larger main, that they would potentially kick into whatever that cost differential is to increase the size of the pipe, provided anybody along this side wanted to move forward with actually extending the water down there, so.
Which side is that, sir? You're just speaking, where you were just pointing.
Yeah, this is on the, the Log Cabin Road.
Log Cabin Road?
Yeah. So the water stops back down in here.
And how far up are you going on Log Cabin, up to?
Well, this take, this is up to John Clough Lane, which is the end of the zone.
That's what I was asking for.
Yeah, it takes it up to the end of the zone itself.
Now where is your Senate Road?
Senate Road is in this location in here, and then the Grange is here on Arundel Road.
So all the access to these units basically would take place along Log Cabin Road or also along Senate Road?
Well, when you're looking at it from the point of where he's looking and doing his, his particular project, it's all going to be confined within the Grange itself.
So it's all coming off of Arundel Road?
Correct. And basically, there's probably more pavement there than would ever be needed, you know? The zone text amendment goes forward, he has to go back to the board anyway for approval because it is a subdivision, so. But in terms of being able to make a text change, you can't be doing spot zoning to one site saying that's what the text is. So it's looking at a text amendment to the zone that would be specific to the Townhouse Corner District.
So would you use some of the, the two existing buildings as part of your conversion process, or...
What he's gonna do is convert the Grange Hall to add the additional units into that.
Additional units.
So he's looking at roughly thirteen potential units. He's had an architect already involved in feasibility studies of how to best retrofit that building to either get, uh, two bedroom units, uh, six two-bedroom units and a one-bedroom, or to look at a variation thereof, no more than the total thirteen bedroom units. Thirteen bedrooms could be accommodated by the system that's currently there for...
With outdoor parking, is that it? In an outdoor parking lot?
Yeah. And there would remain apartments and not be all apartments and minimalists. So actually, maybe easier, you know, if you look at this plan, this is all pavement, so there's more pavement than is necessary for the amount of parking that would be required.
The Grange building is the one in the front.
This is the Grange.
And those are apartments in the back.
Right. And those are four, that was the prior dormitory for the college, and it was broken into four apartments.
So the Grange building will remain, it will also be converted?
It'll be, that will be converted.
Both will be converted?
Yeah. So I mean, this already is four, so a total of thirteen...
Right.
On the site, so it would be nine additional units.
What's the square footage of the Grange building?
You may ask me that.
It's three stories.
It's three stories.
Yeah. So would you have to add an elevator, or would it all be a walk-up, or is there already an elevator there?
That part I'm not involved in at this point, or obviously as far as he's concerned, before he goes to the expense of trying to design the building itself.
Right, he wants to know.
We need to know whether or not, you know, the zoning text amendment can be made to allow him to be able to do that. So this is the first step in his process, so.
Well, what's the significance on the other side of your, other, other side of the, of your board?
Great location.
The, the, the hash line across the south end of the, yeah, I guess the east, east side, yeah, right. Is that just to divide it from the other two lots there?
Yeah, it was just to call it out so that you could see that that's was the parcel itself.
Okay.
So are you asked, I'm, I'm curious, I'm not sure I understand what it is that we're being asked to change. Minimum lot size?
Minimum lot size from twenty thou, a reduction from twenty thousand square feet per dwelling unit to eight thousand square feet per dwelling unit for apartments.
It's a density reduction.
Density.
It's not a lot.
Reduction for apartments.
Okay.
Just for, specifically for apartments.
Because it's already in the Townhouse Corner District, is that right?
Yeah.
Uses are permitted, it's just the lot size, minimum lot size requirement per unit is what the problem is in order to be able to develop the apartment.
Yeah, the minimum lot size per family.
Correct. And I think the twenty thousand probably was established based on what the state plumbing code was for having a minimum of twenty thousand square feet to be able to put a septic system.
It was.
Yeah, so.
And that's, that's why I was curious, I know the building, the building's gone with three levels, it's got a fair amount of footage.
Yeah.
To, to give historical, um, some historical perspective here, and Bob's probably maybe aware of this, the dormitory had eight units in it in two thousand eleven, and it had twenty-one business condos in the, designated for the Grange Hall.
Right.
The owner at that time decided to get a better market price, so combined the units in the dormitory to make four of a market-based apartments. And then, of course, as you know, the Kenny Monk Port, like, occupied the first floor and then occupied the two other.
Well, that's why I was wondering about the reduction to eight feet, uh, to eight thousand on the Grange.
Well, basically, the eight thousand is a zone-related, not specific. It, it's needed in terms of trying to get an efficient number of units. That's where we started with the eight thousand square feet. So he has already, as I said, had his architect just do some concept plans, you know, based on code requirements, square footage, average size for what he thinks are the affordable range for units. And I think it's six two-bedroom and one one-bedroom, or a series thereof of single one-bedroom. He hasn't really worked through the whole program yet, you know? It's really been, uh, the shortest way is on the back of an app and the architects have just taken the flow plans and just trying to sketch out how the space could be divided up, work with the existing infrastructure as far as utilities and how that relates to the layout. So, but that's not as far as he's going. I haven't seen any of this, I've just been given the numbers at this point, so. Obviously, you know, he's, he's, the first time I've met him, he said it really was breaking his heart every time he'd put a unit on the market, and the folks that were calling and pleading to, to get an apartment unit, so. Actually, Mr. Logan, who was here before, has done work for Mr. Fitzpatrick and has told me that that really is his passion in terms of conscience, in terms of being able to apply it often.
And, uh, and you read in your packets the, the report from Jim Logan, on the number of units, which would be six two-bedrooms. And that's just for the system down here, that does not include the system for the back.
Correct, yeah. That's why, you know, in terms of looking at the Grange Hall itself, you know, Jim Flether, the way he broke that out, it could be any number of break up, but not to exceed more than the nine bedrooms. Exactly.
What do they call affordable?
Trying to wrap my head around this because we're...
What do they call affordable? I don't know what is regular race error, but they're...
Well, it's not gonna be a lot size, it's gonna be a density.
I don't know what it, what it is, but it is a lot of affordable range. It's not a subsidized, affordable...
Minimum lot size of twenty thousand or minimum lot size per family of twenty thousand.
They asked about that.
I don't know. I mean, that's why I'm just throwing out the question.
Oh, I know, it's a good question. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that.
She's example.
He's not looking at this.
Go to the D D one.
It's coming in the market.
We have to face some apartments that are lacking or something. Could we allow apartments in that district? Because as you recall, that original idea was, was actually a great integration where we were trying to encourage, um, retail on the first floor and apartments on the second floor, living accommodations there. Now, obviously, couldn't do it by lots in that situation, so we were doing a type of square footage, one, one family.
Well, I'm sure I'm suffering from an extreme case of drain damage. I'm just trying to think to myself, we're looking at a net lot, a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. That lot's way bigger than twenty thousand.
It's twenty thousand square feet per dwelling, per unit. Okay? So, I mean, this, this lot...
I disagree. I, that's not what I read when I see this. When I read this, minimum lot area per family unit is twenty thousand square feet.
If you had a hundred and sixty thousand square feet, you could put eight families there.
Right. And he wants to reduce it to eight.
They want to increase the density. They want to increase the density based on the ability of the land to accommodate what's happening here.
So basically, it can accommodate the system as the whole site is designed and handled at a total of thirty.
Doesn't it just still down, you just, you want to allow for a larger size apartment building? Is it created as simple as that?
For an additional density.
To, to increase the density.
How big is that square, is that lot?
Two and a half.
Two point five, four.
Okay.
Or car wreck or something.
Two point five, what, a hundred thousand square feet?
Hundred thousand, no, a hundred and ten.
Okay. It seems, I think I want to hear from, from the rest of the neighborhood, from the TCB before we make that kind of decision.
Oh, you will.
And another part of this...
Consider it. We, we need to, we need to get them to come in and, if, if they're gonna show up in opposition, if we go through this entire process and they show up in a public hearing in opposition to this, we, we're gonna end up wasting a lot of time. I think it would be better to have it, have an informational hearing for all of the folks in the TCB now to find out. Because if they're all opposed to it, I'm not gonna vote for them. I don't know, I don't know what anybody else feels like, but we need to take into consideration, because it's gonna affect everybody in that zone.
Yeah. This was intended to be a high-density zone anyway.
But this is where we ended up, and I think, I think we need to, to find out how the rest of the community about it. That's just me.
I agree, but before moving forward, if, if there's a lot of opposition, it might, whether, regardless of what we think.
Oh, I, I would expect that you'd be going to a public process to get the community involved.
I've done this enough on both sides of the fence.
And I, if, if, if they don't mind, I don't mind, but I want to make sure that they don't mind first.
Okay, let me ask a broader question here. You're on, you're on the doorstep of Kenny Monk Port. We have seen what proximity that Kenny Monk Port has done to residential and commercial prices, primarily residential prices in that particular area. If we increase density expectancy, the first question to your, your client would be, how long would those units be affordable? And that would be number one. But number two is, um, um, there is an incentive, I would imagine, would be quite an incentive for people to convert into multifamily for this very simple reason, that, um, that there is a workforce housing need that exists. This is, we're in a suburb community here, we're not as oriented in the suburb community as Kenny Monk and Kenny Monk Port are, but there is a drastic, there's desperate need for housing.
And I, I agree, there is a desperate need for it, and thi- this is probably a good deal. I'm talking the neighborhood of Arundel. There, I need to find out how they feel about this one.
Because that's really a prime area, too, because it's, it is literally steps from the port. I mean, in property, lots and houses along Arundel Road have sold, some, I know of two that sold for seven figures plus, so...
And the other part of that, I mean, it does two things. Ted's point about trying to get that integration of housing and commercial, you start bringing people in, then you may have others that are interested in doing commercial. Not saying that every one of these parcels are gonna go to that density requirement, or someone may come in and buy all those lots because they can combine all that to get a higher density.
Right.
So, I mean, it, it expands the opportunities for landowners to do things, and recognizing as I do, people who own property sometimes don't see beyond, you know, I don't want that.
Welcome to Arundel.
Why, it's not only Arundel, I experience it everywhere.
No, but I see people wanting higher value multifamily or townhouses or whatever in that location because it's just steps from Kenny Monk Port.
Right.
And, and, you know, if you're gonna put people who are in the workforce, you want
to, you know, what happens traditionally is they get put in a place that, as part of the neighborhood, that is the least desirable or the least developed or whatever, but that is a prime spot.
Yeah, and that's, the fear is, I'm not sure how long you'd be able to control affordability. Number one, and number two, there's an Airbnb potential there, pretty strong Airbnb.
That's why I was...
And then we talked about that earlier, you know, that, that right now there isn't one in Arundel because we don't have...
We do have Airbnbs.
Well, we do, but I mean, it's not...
Airbnb is right down in that region.
Right, but there's, there's not a lot of it compared to what's going on in Kenny Monk Port and, you know, other areas and stuff.
I, I have a question about affordability. I, I, I am not sure what this has at all to do with affordability, except for the goodness of the owners to keep the rents down.
Yeah.
We have nothing requiring a percentage to go to affordability. We don't have anything defining what affordability is. I think this just becomes market rate. It's just, it's, that's all, so.
Or what the owner wants it to be.
Whatever.
The owner can do his own rent.
But we can't require it to make it affordable, I don't know.
Well, actually, your complaint does require, well, did require until last update, an affordability component, but it's never been implemented.
It's kind of a nebulous term, though, so what does affordability mean?
That's a really good question. Low moderate income?
We can move this forward because it sounds nice, you get the single mothers, that's great, maybe the workers who can't afford to live on the beach, that can be the proposal, but I don't buy that it'll ever be in action. I think it'll be whatever they can get for it. If I owned it, I'd go for whatever top dollar I get, and, and I think that that's a very desirable area, that I think you can get top dollar, except for being right on the beach, it, it's, it's only.
Well, one, one thing also that's way out of our control, and that's whatever happens on the other side of that red line.
Well, and you, you could get a lot of butters that object to that because it diminishes, they feel, it diminishes their property values. All of a sudden, instead of building the kind of project that's going to enhance their value, it actually, some people could view it as a project that diminishes their property.
Are you talking about this side?
No.
Are you talking about the Kennebunkport?
Oh, yeah, I, I expect calls from Vern.
So, on the other hand, if you want to.
This is, this is all Kennebunkport.
Yeah, I know.
Right, right, but that's.
That's the gravel pit over there.
Yeah, people think this right away.
But even down by the bicycle shop.
That's right.
I mean, there's a lot of really, yeah, there's a lot of really nice property there.
Now, question, you said at one time when we had this, it was going to be businesses.
Yeah.
And that was, how many units was that again?
About twenty-one units, and they were all incubator spaces, they were like a room with an off, enough room for an office, you know, for desk and.
So, was it live work or was it just?
No, it was just, it was just incubator spaces.
Yeah.
So, what do we class, what do we class my incubator space?
Incubator space would have been two hundred square foot office spaces.
Like a WeWork kind of situation.
Or it might have been, might have been, I mean, it wasn't really well defined, we played more David's approval, but it wasn't really well defined what the interior was, the maximum was determined based on, actually, I think part, but it was in place, there were permits that were granted for it, and it was the owner who decided that they weren't gonna really, there wasn't a demand at that time. It was the downturn, it was two thousand and ten, two thousand, oh, it was two thousand nine. So, it was right in the middle, it was right in the middle of the downturn, she started talking about, I think she executed till two thousand eleven maybe. I said thirteen in my report, in my report, but it's actually, I think it was eleven that she did. That's, remember going down there, remember you guys had to do a change of use down there, and, and the Land Board was a little upset with her, because you went from, it was the Arundel Bike Shop, as soon as you put up the sale, it was the Kennebunkport.
Yeah, but also too, when we had that road going down there with all the playground stuff being eliminated.
From the daycare, right?
From the daycare, but also too, something about the new septic system, which was gonna be coming out onto the playground, I think.
It's out in the front, yeah.
No, this is on the side.
So, what do you think, Rich, is the best thing to do, is to take people's temperature first before?
I don't, I, I, I think it's a good idea, but I want to know what the, what the, the people in that neighborhood feel about it.
We don't need a landmine at last minute for, like you've had.
If we, if we get a, if we get them, if they show up and they express opposition, it's, it's all done. If they don't show up, if it's typical of a, of a public hearing, and we don't get a lot of people showing up because it's not a controversial issue, then we can proceed forward.
But this is probably gonna be fairly controversial, don't you think?
If, if it is, then they can show up. If they don't show up, then don't complain to me later on that we didn't tell you this was going on, they're all gonna get notified.
It's gotta go to town meeting for approval anyway. You don't want somebody coming up the week before town meeting making a big mistake that they wouldn't invite you to come in. That's why when we did this district originally, we had quite a few workshops on it.
Yeah.
Because originally, it was, you know, the intent was another business, a small business district that didn't exist. And you had a lot of businesses in there, they're all nonconforming, they can expand and all this other nonsense, and that's why we did this.
Correct me if I wrong, also restriction is like when we had four publics, a lot turned on having that. And then buses and not buses and so on and so forth, I mean, I'm just throwing that out, Rich.
This would be an incentive to make major improvements in that district, to be honest with you.
Now, how far is sewer from there?
There is no sewer.
No, nothing up?
The real restriction here.
North Street?
The real restriction here is going to be the ability of the soils to be able to handle the increased. Well, the, the dense, I mean, the amount of flow, I mean, you can put in Elgin systems, you can put in pre, you know, you can put in pre-treatment systems that will boost the ability, you know, the capability of existing soils to, to accommodate a higher flow than normal, than a typical reality, septic system, you know, typical type of bed, but.
I, I would suggest that for the first meeting in, in January, on the ninth, we hold a public hearing, we advertise it, send out notices to all of, all of the people who live in T C D, because it's gonna affect every one of them, it's not the butter.
Do you want a public hearing or want a workshop?
A workshop would be fine, no sense.
Why not just go a public hearing, go right to that, get, get it done?
I'm with Jens.
We can do that too.
Well, because we don't have, well, I mean, we have a request, I mean, we can do a public hearing.
I guess I would ask the question in terms of a workshop versus public hearing. Public hearing would be, the full language would be developed and that's what you'd be hearing, taking action on it. Versus a workshop that if all of a sudden something comes out of that workshop session, that the language is reduced, you know, in terms of height and find affordability, if that becomes something that needs to be put into the zoning, you want that language worked out before you actually go to a public hearing. So, the workshop, I think, does give you that opportunity to find out what the.
Well, I would push that workshop later into January and not make it the first meeting that we come back.
We can push it down to the twenty-third, which would be the.
Have a chance to really advertise it. Like get people to settle in after the holidays, kind of thing. Oh, first meeting after the holidays, people are.
Right now, I'm just trying to kick it any out, we've just cleared our decks, pretty much, of just whatever.
First meeting would be the January eighth, right?
Eighth.
Ninth.
And we don't, I may be missing something. No, I'm not, I have some stuff that's gonna be coming in, but I have not received it as of yet. And what do I need to receive by, by Christmas? I need to receive whatever they're talking about by Christmas, but I haven't seen anything solid on my desk yet.
I still think people are a little cross eyed from the holidays and it, it actually, we have the potential to get a better turnout if we do it a little bit later in January.
If we do it later, we can do it later, I mean.
I mean, we do want people to show up.
The Fitzgeralds are coming back with another subdivision on there.
We could do, we could do a workshop on the sixteenth, which is in between the two, the two weekly meetings.
You can go back to the weekly meeting.
No.
Not if we can avoid it.
No.
I'm just saying from a workshop point of view, exclusively for this issue of, of having a, I don't know how you guys feel about that. I know Marty doesn't want it.
No, I think we should do it in a meeting.
The fact is, also in January, okay, weather wise.
Yeah, then we'll, we'll do it on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Yeah.
And.
I have one other question.
It gives me also more time to get the word out.
Yep.
Because we want people to turn out.
Well, how does the, how do you think that the eight thousand is gonna square with some of the other space and bulk requirements, specifically in the zoning standards for maximum building footprint and maximum building height? Are there gonna be some numbers that don't make sense in the?
The building height is still gonna control, you know, in terms of what you can do, the maximum square footage for the building, I don't think that's gonna be that big of an issue either.
No? Yeah, in a, yeah, in order to make a building that is affordable from a construction standpoint to accommodate, doesn't mean.
You know, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean that it all has to, I mean, in this case, you get two buildings that exist on site. You know, when you get down to a small lot size, you know, you may wind up with having to create a couple of buildings that actually create that total number of apartments themselves, so.
Yeah, I, I guess I was thinking beyond just the existing range building. I mean, is this gonna work for somebody else who wants to do this on, on a larger scale?
On a large, obviously, they'd need a larger land area, probably.
How many acres is this supposed to? Two point five?
This is two point five. And you've got a four point three six down here along this, the Rosanne eight. And then you get a two, five points, two seven here. Those are the two largest parts, everything else is two acres, this one's three, that's out of the zone. But the average ones are, well, it's all around two, there's a three and a half back in here.
That's four five.
That's four five?
I did see. Yeah.
That's true.
I can try to look at the area a little.
I forgot what the name of that was until Marty said it.
I remember that one.
What, four five? I think Bob Zuko said that.
It was a nice water bowl.
Yeah.
And it did get, it did get interesting at times.
Well, I was introduced to it by my late father-in-law when we came up here.
Actually, I think he used to have work on some of his, George Monroe.
Yeah.
Not now.
It's my father-in-law that I'm speaking of.
But it was a good, it was a good place for the fish. We have, we have, we have four fathers in there, I don't forget, you had the other one as four.
Yeah.
I can't, we have the peace and play as Rosanne. I can't think of it right now.
Way small.
Cross street from the Yachtsman.
Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about, I can't think of the neighborhood.
That's true.
Yeah.
But it seems to me there ought to, there is a place for it.
Board gardens.
Right.
This is a place. Actually, yard one is.
The basement there underneath.
Yeah.
It was there a couple of times too.
Who knows?
Yeah, but, I know, yeah, but yeah, somebody just spent a fortune building a house, building, building a house on Route one right next to Kevin Moore's place. You know, I've been saying, no, who, nobody wants to live on Route one, and all I get are, I've got people who want to subdivide, like family division, because they can get away with it, doing that, on Route one.
I've lived on Route one, don't ever want to do that.
No, but that doesn't mean our people who think it's.
So, we're gonna do a workshop on the twenty-third?
Yeah.
And we're all in a workshop?
Everyone tried, Bob, yes, with all.
And Tad will try to beat the bushes and get people out.
I'll get people.
So, Bob, what did you tell?
Send them, send them all notifications.
Does anybody, does anybody know how it is that there is this protuberance of Kennebunkport into Arundel right there, here?
Oh, that's the.
No, it goes right inside. Goes right inside in front of your finger, right down in, inside, spread it out.
Yeah.
That's Kennebunkport.
Yeah, that's Kennebunkport.
Not in that.
You used to be, I think it was a poorhouse where, where.
Oh, way back when?
Way back.
Was that in nineteen fifteen or?
Is that at the Senate Road?
The poorhouse.
Across from the church?
Is the poorhouse?
Yeah, where it was public housing.
In that pocket of a rumble.
And it's, it's, there's a building.
Well, no, back then it was Kennebunkport.
Building probably could have twelve bedrooms in it or something, it's where.
Like a roomy house?
Yeah, something like that.
Also, the, the trolley, the trolley station used to be down there too, and I don't know if that's where the trolley station is.
Well, it's just funny because it, it looks like.
As, as historical society.
When that was a war farm, Arundel didn't exist.
I think you were talking.
That's like sunny corner the other way.
I have no idea.
Oh, wow.
I wasn't around then, I didn't get transferred down here until seventy-five.
Oh, okay, I didn't know you were a young guy.
Okay, so I think we're good, yeah.
Much longer than that.
Twenty-third.
I know.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for this one.
Does the board want to do any slight investigation before, take a walk at some point?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
On this one, on this one?
Well, I mean, just in the district, just to get a feel for it, I think we need to do that at some point.
Well, why don't we see how people feel about it first? Yeah.
Pick the first sunny, warm day.
Really, with no, no on the ground?
Late April. Well, after Saturday, there probably won't be any snow.
Are we supposed to get a lot of rain, rain, right? Is this supposed to be heavy?
Yeah, but it's not supposed to snow on Tuesday.
Is it?
That's what they said in sex.
It's just, you know, then it freezes and then you're slipping and sliding all over.
They better get up and ask, can we, quite a sudden, especially.
The rest of the agenda?
Thank you.
The changes to the ordinance and all that.
Yes, private people.
All right, you do the ordinance, but why don't you do the bylaws?
Oh, yeah, okay.
We all got a copy of the bylaws, right?
Yep, we did.
Let's get that done.
No, we're here.
I forgot that we had.
I don't know, I don't think.
Bylaws. Know this?
Yeah.
Do I have it in a folder? Yeah, I only print.
No, so.
Oh, yeah, I did for them.
I just have to find, I saw it, I put, I moved it from this.
Guess I should have used it in the folders. Do you guys want to recycle folders, give them back to me, I can reuse them.
What?
Oh, I was gonna give you some of your little hippie dudes.
Here, here, here's your recycling.
Uh, yeah, actually, I, I have a problem where I have four files in these, in separate files, and I'm going to clean them all up and just kick the record file, that's all I'm gonna do, I can't do that.
All right, so let's figure out what we're doing so we can all go home and go to bed.
All right, have better.
Changes.
Bylaws for the planning board.
What we had a change, change was, and you guys went over it, was on sidewalk?
Right.
Yeah.
I was in here.
Yeah.
And where it said sidewalk shall be held as required by the plan, and it shall be conducted by an ad hoc committee consisting of a minimum of three planning board members. Sidewalk shall be advertised in a meeting, and the sidewalk committee will report their findings and recommendations to the board at the next regular meeting.
And, and I'm, I'm of the opinion that the ad hoc committee, because right now we need to have four people, and we can't have it. But if we have an ad hoc committee, that ad hoc committee will consist of whoever shows up. Whatever three people show up will, will constitute that ad hoc committee. And then they can, at least we can get that fulfilled and then report back.
Great, yep, the solution, the solution, okay, that was one. Number two, what's section, we'll, we'll vote on.
Altogether?
Yeah.
Hey, I'm just making sure that we're.
We got the hearings.
Hearings, yeah.
At the consent of the presiding officer.
Yeah, I have a request in the presiding office, the consent in the.
It's at the consent of the presiding officer.
Yeah, I have a request. But it doesn't belong.
Is it, is the, is it at the right preposition?
Could be with the consent.
Yes, with the consent.
With the consent of the presiding office, so that way that.
Whoever chairs the meeting gets to decide whether or not they can give out, who can show, when to say, when to hit the gavel. That's it.
Uh, number C, section five or six C agendas, publishing a newspaper with, and I'm taking daily out, just as an option, as an option, because right now I have no choice but with public hearings, I have to advertise in the Portland Press Herald, or else we are going to expand the time span in which I can advertise. If I want to advertise as a post, I have to do it two weeks in, or three weeks in advance, because they publish on Thursday.
So, given the changes that are occurring in.
Friday, excuse me, Friday, so it doesn't, I can't get, I can't get that ten days, excuse me.
Given the changes that are taking place right now in print.
Yeah.
You know, things like these dailies and whatever, are we eventually gonna move to digital notifications? Because A, it would be a huge savings, and B, it would be just streamlined things quite a bit. And when do you think that could happen?
I think it could happen as soon, right now, the only really requirements that we have for public hearings in a daily is for ordinance change. That is a state statute. That for an ordinance change, it has to be published in a, in a newspaper, notice has to be published in a newspaper within a certain, within that community. We also have, we would have to change our subdivision ordinance, which says that public hearings for subdivision are to be advertised in a daily newspaper.
But it's hard to find a daily, at all.
There's only one.
There's only one.
There's only one, so, but taking it out of this will pave the way, out of our bylaws, immediately will pave the way for making changes in the subdivision and in the zoning.
In twenty twenty?
In twenty twenty.
Okay.
But we need to take it out of this.
Yeah.
And exploring it, you know, unfortunately, it's one of the things I could have asked, we had one more time before she left.
Wait, was she gone down or did she go on vacation?
No, she's gone down.
Oh, I thought she wasn't gone until the first of the year.
No, she's first, first year.
So, we're gonna ask her to be here.
Well, I could try, she's working right now on her, on her, on the language, yes, I did.
Did you give her the bundle of sticks?
I haven't given her the bundle of sticks, I'm not sure she's gonna laugh.
Then, then she, that just proves she has no sense of humor.
No, she does.
And one of the.
She will laugh.
A child, and their five-year-old son decided he wanted to raise some money, so he has little bundles of sticks about a day long, just got a bundle, and he was selling them for two bucks a piece, looking up, and it said he could give this to.
Can't hear you, what's going on.
It, it stems from much earlier, like two thousand and ten, discrimination between staff, the meaning CEO, and planner, and planning board, as to the bundle of sticks that is a easement and right of way. It's, it's, it's a joke. It's, it's, it's a joke.
Okay, section seven.
So, so, seven D. Seven D is the determination of completeness, which is, before taking action, an application of the planning board shall formally review all submissions to determine if the applicant has provided all the information required by the Land Use Ordinance Subdivision Regulations for Approval. The application submission checklist shall be reviewed by the board prior to determining the application to be complete. So in other words, that checklist, it's in the back of the subdivision application, that checklist sits in the bass, back of the conditional use or the, uh, site plan. We go through it.
We go through it.
We've got through it, and we just go, yes, 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 everybody agree, yes, yes. And so, we don't, they don't ask for waivers, we just say, you don't have this, you do have this, and the determination is based on that. What it means for me is I'm gonna start saying to these guys, you don't have all this stuff on here for them to make that determination. You're not gonna be on the agenda.
They can still ask for waivers though.
They can ask for waivers, if they don't supply it, they can ask for a waiver, and that's what they'll do, and then we'll just go down, we'll go down the list and make, and check off each one of these boxes, so that.
That makes it easy.
It makes it so much easier.
Way more efficient.
Much more efficient.
Um, and on E, I, and please tell me if this, I'm out of line, but would it be possible, instead of having to have, like, Rich read eight pages of information that we are somehow able to vote on the findings of fact and read all of those without having to read everything else, and can we hand it out or make it available so that when we come to vote, we, we just vote on the findings of fact?
I appreciate that, but I think it's a matter of getting it into the public record.
Is that what it is?
Yes, and this was basically commanded to us by our town attorney.
Which attorney?
Yeah. Basically because the town has had a history prior to, uh, and I think there's, there are people on this board who can attest to it that say, okay, we wanna approve this, okay, vote to approve, vote to approve, big subdivision. And then the findings of fact are written by staff. And the problem with that is staff writes something that is not said at the meeting, or follows the ordinance requirements where the town, where the planning board has not.
How about if we were all, how about just as, as like a plan?
Yeah.
We sign the findings of fact as written, as written with the amendments that have been put on them, maybe by hand.
What happens if you have, we've had situations where we've had votes on findings of fact that weren't unanimous. And we know that if we have any one finding of fact in which we don't have, we have a majority that, that finds that not, that he was not, they did not meet that requirement with the application, that D O A.
Right, I'm just saying, half of our meeting tonight was taken up with reading all of the preliminaries. And I'm not saying we shouldn't, you know, somehow get it into the public record, but, you know, the, we have to vote on each one of the findings of fact and either approve or disapprove of that particular finding, right?
Only on the conditional use.
Only on the conditional.
Only on the conditional use do we have to vote on.
What we do, what we do with the, with site, we don't do this with site plan. We're done, we just read it and vote it.
We did. Oh, well, that's, that's what we do with everything other than the conditional use. It's like, that's what we did with A, just read it and say, okay, up and down.
And that's what, and that's what Leah is, when we dealt with, with, frankly speaking, with the boy stuff for instance.
Yeah.
We were very happy that we made those, those, those decisions and made those votes on those individual items.
Right, and I'm not suggesting that we skip all of that, I'm just.
It is onerous, but.
It is onerous, and I will try to, and trust me, I don't like writing anywhere than you like here. Um, because ad hoc gets tedious and you do have to do, I mean, these things are four or five pages long.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and there's always, they're, they're shifting landscapes, they're shifting pictonic plates, and sometimes, you know, I get it wrong.
Do you have, uh, do you type this stuff in?
Yeah.
Can you not make an application to get DragonSpeak or something like that for you?
So that you can speak it.
Me and technology?
Yeah, yeah, so it can go in the record that way.
Why don't we add that to the planning board budget that you're saying?
We have a budget that's.
That's a good idea.
We have a budget that's going in front of the, uh, budget committee for roughly twenty thousand dollars.
So this would be.
That includes technology.
That would be, be an extra bunch, five hundred bucks?
No, not even.
Not even.
Yeah.
And then it would automatically be in the public.
Can you imagine that? It'd pay for itself in a quarter.
If I just, if, if I just dictated, basically.
Right, basically you just dictated it to the public record.
Dictated it and then you added it.
DragonSpeak is.
And then we vote on the things we have to vote on, so you don't spend.
DragonSpeak.
More than ten, I mean, it's nine thirty-five.
If you get that.
I think a lot.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's go back. How do you guys feel about the, the bylaws of the planning board?
No, it won't work this.
I, I will move to approve it, that's what we're looking for.
That's what you're looking for.
That's my.
I'll second that.
Okay, question.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the changes to the bylaws. Any discussion?
Yeah, what about including or have we did include citizen petition?
That's a separate section, that's not part of the bylaws, that's in the ordinance itself.
That's in the ordinance, it's gone to Leah to review what we reviewed last time. Oh, you weren't here.
That's why I'm asking you.
That's, uh, I was, you got a copy of that though, right? It should be, it should have been sent to you digitally. If not, I will send it to you tomorrow. We, I, I revised that, the planning board has reviewed that, I sent it to Leah for her, since we're requiring citizen petitions to be reviewed by the town attorney. Now I'm gonna ask her to, uh, the town attorney to review all of our proposed changes. Um, and so I sent it there saying, what's wrong with this, tell me what's right and wrong. And I lifted a lot of it from the, the, the town attorney review, it's lifted from the state statute for the attorney general reviewing the subdivision.
Well, like, why I'm asking, I'm reading this, is because we've never even seen what the petition was, I mean, in the past.
Yeah.
We've always had to see what the petition said.
Yeah.
Okay, and had, they had like a thirty-day window.
Yeah.
Or whatever, else not.
I think we've got, what, six months to put in there?
I think so.
Yeah.
No, no, I mean, we had a thirty-day window to get the, to get the, uh, petition signed, okay? But then they had to submit it to the selectmen, and because the selectmen turned out, had to act on it within a certain period of time, statute.
That's the state statute.
But like I said, and when it does not comply with the ordinances.
That's why we've put in something else. What we've done is we've put in that, before it goes to the selectmen, it's gotta be reviewed for the town, by the town attorney so that the town attorney reviews the proposed language in terms not only of proper numbering and language construction and, and, um, and its readability and its, but also that it doesn't, uh, conflict with other parts of other ordinance. So I don't have a great conflict that someone created by a petition that, frankly speaking, is, is contradictory in other sections of the ordinance. So that's what the town attorney does, the town attorney and the applicant pays for it, the town attorney, to review it. No different than a petition, uh, that goes to, for statewide, either a, a, a citizen veto or proposed legislation goes to the attorney general for review for the same purposes before it can get to the petition for it.
But that's separate from what we're voting on, right?
That's not involved.
Let's just vote on this.
That's being reviewed by the, by the town attorney right now.
Okay, these bylaws that you have.
Yeah.
Do, after we pass them or anything else, do we have to go hold a public hearing?
Nope, these take effect immediately.
These are rules of the organization.
This is, these are the rules for operation of this board. If we approve these, they take effect immediately. So the motion has been made and seconded to approve the amended bylaws. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
Okay.
Check these out too?
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll look at the zoning ordinance on, to surely.
Are they gonna also be sent to the selectmen, that they know?
I will give it to the town court.
Are we adjourned? Are we not doing that page?
Nobody has an adjourned.
We're not doing that. What is that?
The backside of today's agenda?
No, we're not. We're gonna table that to the next.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll move to adjourn.
We're seconding that.
Doesn't have any other new information for it.